Yeah.
Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission, Campbell's Planning Commission. Meeting of Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. And let's see. By way of introductions, my name is Matt Concorde and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the May twenty seventh. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Majewski.
Uh, present.
Commissioner Scissor. Yeah, Mr. Strasky.
Present.
Mr. Buckbinder.
Present.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Pastor Fields.
Present.
Chair Cam Carter.
Present. Thank you. On to minutes, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any corrections?
I have a couple of things.
How much your scissor?
Yes, on the design and development standards. Somewhere.
Do you have a page?
It's page three of five on the minutes.
It's still the five of the minutes, I see.
As it says, designed discussions, session centered on setbacks, roof types. And architectural compatibility, staff. Some commissioners favor allow flat roofs. Prompted debate, some commissioners favorite allowing them for design flexibility, others preferred uniform gable roof standards. I thought the thing that we got from that whole thing about the standards was that there was a consensus. Of not, of having all the city's single family homes conform. To the same standard and not specifically separating out San Tomas. And Campbell Village as having special consideration. I, I was under impression we had a consensus that that everybody would follow the same standard. I don't think that's reflected in the minutes.
I do recall that.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So I was hoping that that could be reflected in the minutes.
So on page three or five, which, you know, where on the page exactly, can you?
Well, that would be the design and development standards, I think, right?
At the very bottom, design and development standards, okay.
And then the only thing I ever had was on the tree removal exceptions. It says other suggestions are included adding following branches as a reason. But I, I, I would, you know, my take on that, I brought that up there and was like, well. Specifically with regards to us being a safety hazard. I think should be mentioned. Yeah, you can have following branches, but.
Yeah, so, so adding the word, you know. Hazardous, hazardous situation.
As, as, as a safety, I think will be the specific. Must the staff can think of other things. That's all I have.
Okay, staff, did you find that? Or?
On the first part, the second part regarding hazardous, can you please?
Page four or five is the beginning.
Four or five, beginning of four or five, it's on.
All right, and then what you would like to add to word hazardous is?
Safety hazards, you know, I'm just saying.
Safety hazard, as a safety hazard for a reason for. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, those two changes are good, I'll move approval of the minutes of May thirteenth with those two changes.
Okay, and we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, perfect motion, a second. Any discussions? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those again?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
We're doing the roll call or?
You want to go to the roll call? This, this is a roll call.
Yeah, Commissioner Scissor.
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski.
Aye.
Mr. Strasky. Mr. Buckbinder.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Pastor Fields.
Aye.
Chair Cam Carter.
Thank you, sir. Okay, are there any communication or agenda modifications?
Chair Cam Carter, no agenda changes, we did have an email coming later. Tracking it down on the housing policy item, if that wasn't forwarded, we'll see if we can forward it to the commissioners. And that, no changes.
Thank you. Would that be discussed in a later item?
Uh, yeah, that's item number four, the housing policy item.
Thank you. Okay, next is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for individuals wishing to address. The Planning Commission on matters of community concern. That are not listed on the agenda, in the interest of time, chair may limit speakers to five minutes, please be aware that state law prohibits. The commission from acting on. And non-agenda items, however, the chair may refer. Matters to staff for follow up. Are there any oral communications? Seeing none in-house, any, anybody online? None, okay. Moving on to public hearings. So, public hearing to consider the application of United Sign Systems. Michel Richmond. To allow an approximately ninety seven square foot, thirty six inch tall wall sign reading Dollar Tree. On property located at one forty eight North San Tomas Aquino Road. And this is, let's see, plan, G L N number two oh two five dash thirty. I guess Tracy's not here, so. Thank you.
So the Tracy's team, that's the last application, they should prepare the staff report, and I'll be doing the presentation for her.
Thank you.
So this is an application for a sign permit for the Dollar Tree store located at one forty eight North Santa Tomas Aquino Road. So this is a large shopping center at the corner of Santa Tomas and Campbell Avenue. It is governed by a rather aged master sign plan adopted in two thousand and four that lays out the parameters. For signage throughout the entire shopping center. Per that master sign plan and the city's local sign ordinance, any sign greater than fifty square feet requires planning permission approval. And so the proposed sign is at ninety seven square feet. Similarly, the lettering height at thirty six inches exceeds the maximum thirty inches that's identified by the master sign plan. Which indicates that additional height is negotiable with the city, which staff took to mean that it could be considered by the planning commission as part of this application. And here you have the illustration of the Dollar Tree signs, so standard channel orders. So in terms of the analysis, the finding for approval for a sign permit for a sign larger than three square feet requires applicant to demonstrate that the additional sign area. Is necessary due to visibility issues, due to issues of distance or obstructions. As noted in the staff report, given the distance of this tennis space from both Santa Tomas Aquino Road and Campbell Avenue. Staff does believe that the additional sign area and height are warranted to ensure suitable visibility. Therefore, the staff recommendation is for the commission to adopt a resolution approving the sign permit to allow, that should be a ninety seven square foot. Thirty six inch tall wall sign reading dollar. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, are there any questions?
Thank you. Just in terms of, not just this shopping center, but say similar ones, like I was thinking there's a dollar store over Campbell Plaza. I was trying to see how big that one was, is this consistent with that, that kind of, you know, size of store? Kind of shopping center? That it would be this big, I mean, it looks to me like it's fine and I'm familiar with that shop. And it is a quite a distance from the two streets, so it does give it more visibility, but I don't know if it was kind of consistent with other ones that we've. Done in shopping centers similar, it's not, it's not oversized.
It's not, it's fairly comparable. And really, the only reason the planning commission has seen it is because the master sign plan didn't have a built in allowance for larger signs. Like Hamilton Plaza, that sign plan allows signs, I believe up to a hundred square feet to be approved by staff. So all the different sign plans have their own rules and some are a little more conservative than others, like this example.
Thank you.
Um, all right, okay, I'm sure Craig.
Yeah, and you know what the size, offhand what the size of the current sign is?
I do not know.
And just one other question, if it's proper to ask, and I think it is, so I know that that center is one of our housing opportunity sites that we. And at one point, the owner, owner representative was having some preliminary discussions with staff about a possible. Housing project or redeveloping part of that center, this, this sort of implies a new lease since they're moving to a new site, so I take it that there's no. Action in terms of a.
I mean, not in the immediate timeframe due to a number of economic issues, but we are still having. For this item in the future.
All right, thank you.
Uh, maybe this is more commentary, but are there any plans to update the master? Site sign plan so that? If we wanted to have it a hundred feet across the whole. You know, city for anything outside of plan, like just so this wouldn't come up again, something kind of benign.
I mean, the fact that the site is, you know, identified for potential redevelopment, hopefully in the near term future, then not, it's unlikely that property owner would want to go through a process to. Drop and propose and seek approval of a new master sign plan, and that would something that they would have to list it on a lot. Now, the city could update its own local sign requirements, but that's a much longer, more complicated, long range planning effort.
Okay.
That's not a priority at the moment.
No, makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, okay, and I have a question, um, this sign, I'm sure it has lights in it, but it's not like the LED. Flash, you know.
No, let's see. No, let's see, that's great, but flash.
We do.
Yeah, there are many out there, those are all illegal. Other than reader board signs which. Display text like in a movie theater, but those aren't intended to flash.
So if I noticed. Flashing sign, do I report code enforcement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, thank you.
Commissioner Buckbinder, did you?
Uh, no, I, I, after a couple of comments.
Public comment, okay, is there, is there a public, is there anyone for a public comment regarding this item? Hearing none, online, none, okay, so, those are public. Hearing and this item, okay. Any discussions, please?
No, I think it's fine, you know, it, it, like Commissioner Zissler says, it's pretty far from Campbell Avenue, especially back there. And I noticed with the new location, the new sign will actually be lower than the current sign is. And I was just going to point out, by the way, just FYI, and I, I didn't expect it to be, so I read the applicant's letter, the applicant's. Architect, whoever wrote it, but it was really a pretty good letter, it's really in depth and really explains the importance. Of city sign, of sign, or the design issues all really are a big deal, anyway, no problem, but just, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And if there's no more discussion, is there?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's the, they, I, I found myself thinking like, maybe we should talk about the, the scale, the sign should be scaled to like the width of the frontage and stuff like that, but. Given that I don't remember the last time we had a sign permit request, and this is truly, it's odd for saying to be set over two hundred feet back from the street, like, seems like a one off, or I don't. Something, I think so, sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there any motion?
Well, yeah, sure, I'll move that the Campbell Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving a sign permit, G L N twenty twenty five dash thirty. To allow approximately ninety seven square foot, thirty six inch tall wall sign reading, reading Dollar Tree. In fighting the project category exempt under section fifteen three oh one of the California Environmental Quality Act. This is a sign at one forty eight North San Tomas Aquino Road.
A second, okay, we got a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Scissor.
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski.
Aye.
Mr. Strasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Pastor Fields.
Aye.
Chair Cam Carter.
Aye. Okay, so this motion passes unanimously, congratulations. Next item. Two oh two six. And two oh three oh Capital Improvement Plan, C I P. Public hearing to consider city of Campbell's twenty twenty six, twenty thirty Capital Improvement Plan. For citywide projects for consistency with Campbell twenty forty general plan. File number two oh two five. Staff is recommending project redeem exam under secret call. Daniel. Your.
Thank you again. So this is the planning commission's annual review of the city's capital improvement plan, in this case, the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty thirty C I P. So each year, the city prepares a rolling five year capital improvement plan that's used to project future capital needs. As required by state law, the planning commission acting as the city's planning agency must review the C I P for consistency with the general plan. And then just as a reminder, the budget or merit of individual projects are outside the scope of the commission's review, so this is really just focused on general plan consistency. Those, those, in your staff report, staff has gone through an exercise of looking at new projects added to the C I P, not previous ones. Identifying them by name, the summary that is included in the summary sheet. And the identified general plan policy act and a strategy that the project is found to be consistent with. Uh, here we have the list of the new C I P projects on the current C I P list. And then based on the recommendation in staff report, staff does recommend that the commission adopt a resolution finding the C I P consistent with twenty forty Campbell Center Plan. And we do have public works and finance department staff here in attendance, so if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Good, thank you for that. Any questions from members of the commission?
I have a question about what we can question. Could you just be? Well, first of all, I want to say there's thirteen new capital projects, right? And some of these are just carryovers to the fifth year, am I correct? About half of them are, 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 then the funding period goes into twenty thirty. And then the other ones, I assume, are new that haven't been on here before, for instance, it looks like the pool. Which has been a lot of talk about the pool for a long time, but that actually hasn't been on. The C I P in the past, and this is a brand new project that's been added.
Uh, for that, I'll defer to our finance and public work staff.
Good evening, Amy L A, Public Works, interim Public Works Director. So to answer your question on the pool, that is a new line item, new project that we've entered into the C I P. And the way we show it is we would start. The first allocation FY twenty six. Using park fees. So this is a multi-million dollar project, and. So we have multiple years of funding, and in the out years, we're also looking at maybe like debt service to, to complete the entire.
I have a follow up on that, how long will the pool remain closed during that process?
Um, that's something that's to be determined. I can't tell you the exact timeline right now.
But do you have a rough estimate? Like if you can, if you can elaborate on the scope of the project and what?
Well, the entire pool will be redone, so. Back about nine years ago, eight or nine years ago, there was a study done about the pool. And what some of the improvements that need to take place. And over the past eight years, we've been having to fix different parts of the pool. And even the locker rooms, they're just not to the function that we would like it to be, especially the pool is a. It's a facility that is used by our residents for various purposes, for recreational purposes and other types of programming. And so improvements were identified, and we just haven't had the funding to move it forward. But as I said, you know, we've been putting maintenance money towards fixing. And it's really gotten to the point where we really need to replace it. So we're, Public Works, we're working with recreation to, you know, develop the improvement plan, how that will be. And so that's why I can't really answer why how long, but it would be extensive period of time.
So, so the, it says fiscal year twenty twenty. Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, that's not necessarily a reflection of, it's going to be during those two years that it's going to be done. And depleted, no?
Yeah, it, it probably will take longer than that, but it's going to have those two years of funding to start with. So it could be later in twenty six that part of the construction would start. And then we're also looking at redoing the, the locker rooms as well.
Okay, and I'm kind of dumb about the finance stuff, so. Does this imply that the twelve million dollars is going to be paid out in those two year, in those two years? Or is, or is there going to be loans that are going to then be spread out? And that's a different line item somewhere.
I'll turn it over to Nora.
Good evening, Nora Wong, Finance Director, to answer your question. Part of the funding source for the pool replacement and the locker room replacement will be debt. And that debt will be spread across potentially twenty to thirty years, it just depends on the bond issuance that we, we do issue in fiscal year twenty seven. Um, so that's still to be determined, but to answer your question, it would be, it will be spread over a number of years, most likely twenty to thirty years.
And do the voters need to approve that bond?
Excuse me?
Do the voters need to approve the bond?
No, it would just be council approval.
I have sort of a similar question on that of like, we did, this is mostly for my own identification. Measure O was for the library and the police, and that was fifty million dollars, this is twelve million dollars. Does the city have a threshold at which they'd like to extend it to the voters, or like, what is? Like, I, I am supportive of the replacement to the pool, I'm just curious of like how this wound up. On here, did this already get approved by council, or like, just knowing a little bit more about the process?
This project has not yet been approved by council, we were taken to council on June third as part of our budget introduction meeting. And ultimately will be approved by council. June seventeenth, Tuesday, June seventeen. Beyond that, there is a process by which council will still need to approve the, the bond issuance. Which is a process that will go to council very likely in fiscal year twenty seven. Um, so there's a iterative process to kind of get to that point.
So do you know how much of the twelve million will be from park fees and how much of it will be from, for, for a debt, for a loan, for a bond?
Off the top of my head, I believe about nine million dollars will be bond issuance and three million dollars will be park fees. Of that three million dollars, two million dollars would be park fees in fiscal year twenty six, and then the additional one million dollars in fiscal year twenty seven.
Okay, so to quit, back to the question in terms of the threshold, so if they're going to do a bond for nine million, and it's only a council approval. Is, is that because it's under some threshold that allows that?
Um, it would not be a tax increase to our residents.
I see.
And so it would be an operational expense. Correct.
No, why, why are there, just, I, let me ask the same question, just slightly different, maybe you can't answer it this way, but, but since so much of this is going to be bond financed. And since the report said that we're like thirty five years behind. On the pool. Re, rebuild, do you know why it's taken so long or why we're doing it at this particular time? Over the course of those thirty plus years?
It's a fairly large expenditure, and it required. A number of years of funding.
From park fees?
From park fees.
You wanted to get to a certain level of park fees.
Correct.
Go ahead, but in the meantime, of course, the cost of the.
Correct, and now we're at a point where, although we have a good chunk of park fees, as Amy mentioned, there's been. Year over year maintenance that's been required, and so at some point, we weigh the cost benefit of maintenance versus just replacing the pool altogether.
Yeah, I, I guess my thought is just to, you know, our, our track, our community center running track is so well, I love, I love driving by there, it's always used. And the city's been so proactive on keeping up with that. But for some reason, the pool, which is also really used a lot. The city has not been, I, I just don't know why, it seems like there was a lapse there, but. That's not a question, so I should have saved that, but.
Any other questions?
I have a, okay, Commissioner Buckbinder. So. Hold up, we're doing transit signal priority, about when do we expect that to come online?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
When do we expect the transit signal priority improvements to come online?
Uh, we are still working with V T A on this, this will be funded through V T As. There's a grant program that they're providing us. And so it'll probably take at least a year to implement because we're looking at different cabinets, different systems. So this will take some time to implement, and right now, it's hard to say a date because we haven't signed the funding agreement yet.
Fair. While you're still here, I, I say this every year, noticing that we have like. Fair. While you're still here, I, I say this every year, noticing that we have like a lot of money for street improvements and not much for bike stuff. And given that we're doing the multi-modal plan this year, are we locking ourselves into a particular car-centric mode of whatever street improvements we're doing? Because like presumably in two years and change, when roughly two years, when we have multi-modal plan, we have, you know, whatever street improvements we plan on doing to have our, our bike network. Are we going to be able to use the street paving, like to piggyback improvements on street with paving, for example? Are we prohibiting that by making this particular plan, or is this allowed for that?
Oh, no, this will help actually with, with transit. So that's one of the modes that we also transit riders.
Specifically, the annual street maintenance budget?
Are you, for the annual street maintenance budget, we do use that opportunity to see if we can be strip the streets and provide bicycle facilities, just similarly with the Hamilton sand resurfacing project that we will be bringing to council for approval. We are not just paving the corridor, but we're also providing the buffer bike lanes.
So if, if we have a, once we have the city plan, like that street maintenance budget could be used to implement, in part to that?
Depending on how far we can go, right? If it's just, if it's on the streets, we can certainly, if it's striping, we can do that. But if we're looking at more extensive improvements, then the majority of the funding has to go towards pavement. If we're using the street maintenance.
Okay, but it's not prohibited from painting bike lanes?
Like, like bike lanes? No, it wouldn't.
Okay, and lastly, actually, you know, that's, that's the main thing I wanted to know about.
Amy, I have a question. So this signal priority, is it for, you said transit, you mean buses or light rail?
It's for buses. So this is working with VTA. We would change our, our controller cabinets and put new firmware so that the buses can talk to each other, so it's more efficient.
The, the buses can talk to the signal and?
Yes, yes, yes.
And, and what about the, the light rail? How about light rail?
Like, light rail?
Do they get priority as well or?
No, not as part of this project.
Okay.
This is on for the buses.
Buses only?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Actually, Commissioner Majewski.
Yeah. So for the traffic calming improvements, do we have certain projects identified already, like certain neighborhoods already identified that need that? Or is it kind of just an anticipation of what, and like based on past projects or how does that work?
It's an anticipation. It's a program that we have in place where residents come to the city and ask for certain, their streets to be considered for traffic calming. So we have a whole traffic calming policy that needs to be followed, you know, starting with the residents with a petition. And the city would go out and evaluate what sort of traffic calming measures. And then we take speed data and traffic volume before we can move forward. So there's a whole policy that we have set up, and this fifty thousand is just to help so that if any of those streets qualify for traffic calming, then we have the funding to provide. You know, they could be, the few that we've done, they're, they're more like speed humps or speed radar signs.
We don't have, we don't have certain places we've identified already that this is going.
Not yet, no, no.
Commissioner Strasky?
Yeah, for the annual street maintenance line item, what is the process by what the, the street locations are identified for maintenance?
We go through an extensive evaluation of the entire city's pavement network. We use a software that is through Metropolitan Transportation Commission. It's called Street Saver. And every other year, we do a thorough survey of all our streets with help from MTC's consultants. And through that, a determination is made on the condition of the entire network. So then the streets are measured through an, a rating called Pavement Condition Index. And from there, we determine which streets would be, would be the right time for us to repave them. And for the past years, what we've done is we've come up with, with a five-year program. We would set aside three years allocation towards one arterial, because it's just so much money, right? To address an arterial street. And then the other two years in the five-year program, we worked on residential collector streets.
And then what about potholes and things like that that are probably too small to be prioritized in your overall process?
Well, those are addressed through our maintenance. So we have a maintenance street budget for those. These are more of the larger capital improvements.
And then can resident, do, do residents submit?
Yep.
Request for those?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
May I ask one more question?
Of course.
So there's a line item farther down. I don't know if I'm off, not allowed, not supposed to ask this, but there's one about the Hamilton Avenue, Highway seventeen southbound off-ramp that's three million dollars. That's a carryover. Okay, so it's my impression that that's only gonna ever happen if we get some kind of Caltrans approval and monies. I, I, you know, we've been talking about that off-ramp for years, right? And the putting in, I guess, an extra lane or something, or another left turn lane. I don't know what exactly, but it, has this thing just been on here for a long time with the three million dollars? And just putting another year ahead, or what's the deal?
Well, we have, you're correct. We've had this project program in our budget for quite some time, and it's really a matter of resources.
Well, can we do that alone, or do we have to have a Caltrans approval because it's part of the freeway system, right?
We do have to work with Caltrans because it is part of the Caltrans system. We do have measure B money to, to, for part of the construction. And we do have some developer funds that will help us also to get this project started. We are looking at ways of starting that as soon as we can get the resources pulled together. I do recognize this project has been in the books for some time. But right now, I think the timing is good too, because we have the Hamilton seventeen bicycle pedestrian over crossing feasibility study that we're working on, and it's that same vicinity. And we, once we have a couple alternatives, we will bring those to Caltrans. And at the same time, we can start some conversations about how we have this off-ramp project in the books as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I think those are all the questions. Thank you very much. So staff, any, any other information? Or that's it, I guess, I guess we don't, we don't, we will make a recommendation, right? That's, that is what you're asking us to do?
I'm taking a motion to adopt a resolution recommending approval to the state council.
Got it. Okay, so unless there's any other questions, I'm looking for a motion.
I think you need a public hearing technically.
Public hearing, okay, that's right. Is there anybody here that wants to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, anybody online? Okay, so no public hearing. So we did our discussion, motion and action. Is there any motion?
Any discussion?
Well, okay, was there any discussion? No discussion needed.
I'll make a motion. Resolution of the Plan Commission, determining that the city of Campbell, twenty twenty six, twenty thirty capital improvement plan is consistent with the Campbell twenty forty general plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scissor?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky?
Aye.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Pastor Fields?
Aye.
Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
Thank you. So that item passes unanimously as well. Next is our study session.
Quickly, quickly, a minute recess, I brought special snack to pass out. Special snacks. I brought for a three-minute recess.
Yes, let's, let's get it. Two-minute, three-minute recess. Thank you. We are back. So. So the next item is a study session, housing policies and programs. Study sessions to discuss options for new housing policies and programs to support housing and affordable housing development in Campbell. Director, Director Rob Eastwood is the presenter.
That's me.
You got it.
Good afternoon, Chair Kamkar Commissioners, thanks for staying with us. Give me one second to share my screen. I'm not used to presenting. Pushing the right buttons here. Okay, almost there. Okay. All right, good evening Commissioners. So, I have an introduction, you know me, I'm gonna lean, I'm gonna enter the item. We do have online in Zoom, can't see them, but hopefully can hear them. Senior Planner Stephen Rose, our Housing Manager of Luisa. And if we get into technical details, I'm gonna lean on them heavily. Generally, the item tonight is, is meant to be a, a learning opportunity for, for Campbell. If we want to think about new policies and actions we could take about a third of the way through our housing elements, to see if there's more the city would entertain or look at to stimulate housing production. So let me go through the item. My suggestion on the format, deferring to you, Chair Kamkar, is to go ahead and present. There's four buckets of areas. What I could do is go through each one, maybe stop after each one, see if there's questions from the commission. At the end, if you want to open up for public comment, I know we have speakers here, and then you can come back and deliberate, provide feedback.
Sounds good.
So this starts with the status of Campbell's housing elements, six cycle housing elements. The commission will remember you were heavily involved back in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three in advising the council on shaping the housing element. The housing elements intended to, to show how we do plans, policies and programs to support housing, affordable housing, and more importantly, produce enough housing through planning for and permitting to meet the city's assigned arena. The city's assigned arena, which is the amount of housing that's designated for the city to build is over the six cycle up to two thousand thirty-one, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven units. The commission might remember, this city planned for a lot more, upwards of five to six thousand. And you might remember, this was a key pivoting point for the city. We planned for a lot, a lot of high-density housing. So we have housing designations of transit-oriented development, high-density housing, commercial corridor, all between twenty-five and seventy-five going units per acre. That being said, over the last two years, due to a couple factors, which I'll, I'll go into pretty fast, the amount of housing production has not been on track to meet our, our arena. Today, over the roughly two years, we've permitted two hundred and seventy units. Glad, glad to announce of that, we have eighty-six below-market rate, which is, which is not a small amount. But if you take that, that pace and that cadence of how we're producing housing over the first third of the housing element cycle and project that going forward with no changes, current housing market, current programs, we are projected to underhit our arena target. So if all is being equal, the cadence is the same, we would produce about roughly six hundred and eighty-seven, seven hundred units. That is, is pretty far below our roughly three thousand arena. And then in the below-market rate categories, you see on the right, and the low, very low and moderate, those would also underperform. So under this current pace, I'd say despite all the actions the city has taken so far, housing production, both market and low market, hasn't met our targets. So what's causing this? We've done a lot of stakeholder outreach engagements, talked to market experts, talked to developers, talked to affordable housing developers, come to conferences, just try to unpack, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? And, you know, the two big things that came back are things that most of the buys are just outside of Campbell's Valleywick or control. So number one is, and this was interesting, it was almost right after our housing element was adopted, the market turned, was starting to turn, it turned a lot more. So the combination of higher interest rates, if you want to borrow money, it costs a lot more to pay on that debt. Number one, higher interest rates, two, construction costs, I believe you're doing higher density development, the supply chain and the costs of the construction materials to build that are much higher. At the same end, the, the rental market, which is typically high-density, has softened a bit. So you put those three things together, and, and most developers who do stack flats or high-density, say it's just not gonna pencil the day. It costs too much to build, it costs too much to finance, and you can't get enough return on it. And say more recently with the current federal administration, there's even some more questions on the tariffs, how that affects that. And there might be some more questions on the construction market with the federal immigration policies that could affect that. On the other hand, affordable housing. these projects sometimes aren't reflective of new codes or policies that the city adopts or other, other codes. A second way to help affordable housing projects is, again, look at what's another way, perhaps provide subsidies. So as I mentioned before, the city doesn't have enough money, its Housing Trust Fund really subsidized an affordable housing project. The Plan Commission might remember, our first step was, well, if we can't provide monies, maybe we can give you a break on your fees. So as part of the affordable housing overlay zone that was adopted last year, a qualifying affordable housing project can get a fifty percent reduction in its park fees. So if you look at the example shown below, if, if an example project, I know Stephen Rose is on mic, provide more, more information you needed. Example, a hundred unit project was to pay two million in park fees under the current affordable housing overlay zone, you could reduce that, and they wouldn't only pay one. Staff is recommending this very tough climate, while we don't have money to support a project for at least the next two years, that the city consider waiving all park fees for affordable housing projects. So that would provide for this case study up to a two million dollar subsidy, which would help the bottom line for affordable housing projects. But the proposal after two years, reassess how much money do we have in our trust fund, the state of the market, we could end that program or continue it based on. Number three in the bucket of supporting affordable housing projects, so for an affordable housing project to qualify to get a park reduction, it has to meet two requirements the city has. The Commission might remember, we have the multifamily development and design standards, MFDDS. Two key principles in those that are the heart of those design standards, one is if you're next to single-family residential, you have to step back your development, so it's not looming over the single-family residential, that's one design component you would have to adhere to. And the other is, in key target commercial areas of the city, the city really wanted to preserve ground-floor retail. And a lot of thought went into, not across the city requiring that, but in key quarters like Winchester and Hamilton. We do have at least one case study where the affordable housing project at VTA Winchester is really struggling to meet that ground-floor retail requirement, I think because they have to satisfy onsite bus parking and a lot of requirements. We have also observed that in several other cities, including San Jose, typically they waive ground-floor commercial retail requirements. And we have heard from affordable housing developers, it's typically very hard to finance their project if they have to do ground-floor retail. Because of all those factors, we are recommending the city consider waiving at least for a two-year period, not the adjacency standards, but the ground-floor retail requirement on a hundred percent affordable projects. And there's not many of these projects that come along, but to help their bottom line, because it's so difficult to meet those, that'd be something that would support. So with that, I'm gonna stop there, again, there are three potential actions in this bucket. Remind the Commission, one is extend the entitlement period, one is to reduce park fees or waive them completely for a hundred percent affordable, and one is to waive the ground-floor commercial requirements. And so if there's a couple of questions at this time, I'm open to it, and so is our Senior Planner.
Okay, and let's start questions, Commissioner Ostrowski.
Yeah, thank you for that overview, so if we were gonna extend the the duration from the application date, from I think three years to five years, you said, how is that impacted, or, and then if we also extend, you know, reduce some of these other requirements for a period of two years, how do those two reconcile?
Oh, probably don't. So one is just the entitlement, so the plan approval period would be extended longer, give them more time to pull, pull a building permit. But that's one bucket. The other two buckets of the reduction park fees and the commercial was intended, just, I just consider them separately, for a two-year period, knowing we're in this difficult market, at least for two years. But consider ways to help this project, so I don't think there was thought.
If there's an approval.
Yeah.
So let's say they apply for the building permit, then they have now five years to execute, right?
Right.
But then if we you know, reduce the ground-floor retail requirement, we say it's for two years. Is it for two years, or does that get extended to five years, based on?
And if I could maybe hop in here and help clarify, most of these housing development projects we have applying for the city are entering through what's called an SB three-three pre-application process, which is both locking in the development standards and the fees at the time of application submission. To say a hundred percent housing, affordable housing development project were to come in during a period of time, say this two, two-year window in which the city has suspended its, its fees for a hundred percent affordable housing products for the park fees, and suspended its requirements for round floor commercial, they can continue to proceed with that entitlement, get approval, then that approval itself would be granted for a three-year period, by which point time they would then need to pull building permits and then come forward with their building permit in a timely manner. So they, they, the policies, they can work together, you look at them independently, but there are mechanisms in place that would allow for a development to take advantage.
Okay, Rob, can you recap that, because it was really hard to hear.
Yeah, Stephen, just so you know, it's a bit difficult to hear you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll switch my headset and see if that improves the situation.
Thank you. I think Stephen was walking through the process that happens to actually get an extension, or to, to how long it, what you have to do to pull a building permit within that period. I mean, I guess to just trying to pack your question a bit more is, is the question, why aren't the two programs reconciled in terms of two years versus five?
Well, no, it's more like, if we extend, if we kind of reduce the burden by, by eliminating ground-floor retail for four years, what does that really mean in the context of putting a development proposal and building it? When does that start?
Can everyone hear me better now? I've switched my headset.
That is better, Stephen, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try again. The answer I was trying to provide earlier is, many of these housing development projects, particularly the hundred percent affordable housing developers, are savvy enough to apply for what's called an SB three-thirty pre-application. So this is especially, the, the mechanism by which they can lock in the development standards as well as fees at the time of application submission. So for all intents and purposes, developer comes in during a period, this two-year window in which the city has suspended its park fees and its ground-floor commercial requirements, then they are subject to that all the way up until their entitlement. Once they're entitled, they would have a three-year window in which they could be pulled, they could pull, say their building permit. That would be an example of how the, the policies could work together, but we could also look at them as independent actions.
Okay, so in essence, we're basically, so we're saying that we would be waiving these requirements for potentially up to five years, or what, seven or eight, if we choose to extend that, that period that they have to pull it for.
Well, you'd be waiving it for the two-year window, but for that window, any development permit that came in would be subject to those rules at that period of time.
For three years, for three additional years.
The three years is post, is, is, by, at which point in time they need to get their, their permit, their building permits, it's a vesting concept. So they go to the Planning Commission of the Council for their entitlement, they'd have up to three years to pull their permits or take other action to vest their entitlement.
So, so on, once, once they're vested, you know, let's say they pulled their permit, is there a completion date for the project?
Or is? Yeah, generally it's governed by building code, my current understanding of it is, they, so they need to go show continued progress on their building permits, I believe it is one year that they have to continue showing meaningful progress, continuing to schedule inspections, continuing to work. At some point in time, the city, if, if they're not meaningfully moving forward, that might be an issue for the city where we might consider taking action to compel completion, but generally not, so long as they're, they're continuing to move forward, you could be working on a project for an extended period of time.
So this is just to secure the building permit, five years?
So I guess I can help answer the question. So I guess the idea is, we have a tough market right now for affordable housing. If either a current project approved or a new project comes in the next two years, we're hoping so, that doing the park reduction will help their financing stack, and the waving of the commercial would help them pencil. The waving of the commercial requirements and the, and the production park fees would help them finance the project, that's the direct intent of those two actions. And then separately, just because the, getting reduction park fees alone is not gonna help pencil the affordable housing project. These, these folks have to run around and get tax credits, federal funding, private funding. So the whole idea is that three to five years, that might provide some funding, but the three to five years just gives them more time to develop that financial stack to build the project.
Before they pull the building permit.
So right now, what would happen, I'll give you an example, like the VTA Winchester project is approved, it has a three-year approval window. If they don't have the financing to build it, that, that will expire, and they'd have to go back through the process in three years.
When you say there, you mean county or VTA?
It's the affordable housing developer.
But, but is there an option? If, if they come upon the, I'm thinking, if, if there's the example of the Winchester VTA, so whenever the deadline is, I don't know when that is, but do the, does the city provide an option for them to come back and us to extend it now? They came to us and said, we need another couple of years, is there a mechanism presently?
That's a good question. Yes, in short, in short, yes, there is a mechanism by which the administratively, the director can grant a one-year entitled, one-year extension of the approval. For periods of time greater than that, they need to go to the decision-making bodies, so they'd need to come back to the, the Planning Commission, for Planning Commission action for a period of time, say two, two additional years. That would remain, that would arguably remain on the table.
Okay, so, so if there is a mechanism, it seems like, yeah, the problem I got with the five years is that we're gonna be out of the, we're almost gonna be out of the cycle. If it goes, you know, we're gonna be so far out, we're, we're already, whatever it is, we got five, this, five, five and a half years to the end of the cycle. So if, if there's a mechanism already where we can extend it, I, I'm not seeing the, the need personally to, to extend it to five years, and I do see a downside to the five years, years being a long time, I understand it, it's harder for them. I wish somebody would fix that problem, or the state would provide funds, but the fact is that if we already have a mechanism, we extend it, I'm not sure. The other two things, the park fees, the waiver, the, the commercial, I'm good with that personally.
Is there a question in there?
Well, I don't know, we were really, this is a study session, so I don't know if we're just doing the same kind of process that we would do in a regular.
I would, yes. So, so if you have a question, you know, we're gonna get together to the discussion section.
Okay, so I asked a question and I got the answer.
Okay, thank you, any other question?
Commissioner, quick finding. Is the parks fee the largest fee that we put on new housing development?
Yes.
Why do we fund our parks by taxing new housing instead of by taxing everybody, just some broad question? Like, we don't really fund anything else by doing that, as I understand it.
Well, there's been a philosophical question there, but I guess, I guess the straightforward question is, there are many impact fees the cities have. And the philosophy and nexus is that as you build new development, those new residences or users come into the city and you have new demands on services. And the nexus is, as you build more housing, those folks need parks, you leverage impact fees to pay for the new parks thing.
And it's also, I understand politically, a lot easier to tax developers as opposed to tax the people who live here and vote here. I guess, in a broad sense, where I'm coming from on here is, I remember when we were talking about our policy programs, it was kind of a worry that we overshoot, maybe, or would have, we overshot, and we built too much housing, and clearly that is not where we are. So like I, I kind of rankle with the idea that we're calling this a subsidy, like we tax new housing to get parks, like in some cases, we tax new housing to get new housing, that's what inclusionary zoning is. If we're not getting enough, like, if we're looking for ideas to make this better, we should stop taxing new housing and find a different way to fund our parks, I'm not saying we shouldn't fund our parks, but like we have Melrose districts for a reason, we have bonds for a reason. Like, if this is a, a significant, this doesn't just affect the affordable housing developers, it affects everybody, and I remember when we were talking about extending the.
Yeah, can you make a good question, please, so, what are the questions?
Can we, can we change this from just having questions now to having discussion?
Well, I have a question, so how about?
Can we do both, though?
I think we want to get all the information out on the table.
Okay, sorry, I'll come back to my speech later. My only advice is, you might wanna, before you deliver it, you might want to open a public hearing, before you find feedback, typically you want to open a public hearing, get feedback, stakeholders.
I'm gonna let two more commissioners go and then have an open public.
Yeah, just, and then. I'm just curious, and you mentioned San Jose, and I know they've done a lot in trying to boost what, what everybody is, the whole state. What are planning commissions doing, every planning commission in the state, or every planning department and every city council doing? Have other cities eliminated park fees? You know?
I know, I know of cities that, that do, yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. Practice has been done.
For Camp, for a city of Campbell, eliminating the park fees would have what effect on the parks generally, do you have any sense of that?
That's, that's a big question, I couldn't give a direct answer. I guess I'll say two things, one is, of course, you would see less money come in, so that case projects of a hundred units would be two million dollars less. Now, the argument the other way is, these projects can't finance, so if they don't get some sort of subsidy and actually go forward, the money would never come in to start with.
Well, actually, they're not, they're not getting the financing. I could talk here from now until next Wednesday with questions about that, and I just wish I knew the development process more. And this, I think I'm gonna get to a question. This is my quick, my quick big speech, maybe it is, I hope it's not, so we have, all government have, we have been working.
And the nexus is as you build more housing, those folks need parks, you leverage impact fees to pay for the new parks thing.
And it's also, I understand politically, a lot easier to tax developers as opposed to tax the people who live here and vote here. I guess, I'm in a broad sense where I'm coming from on here is I remember when we were talking about our policy programs. It was kind of a worry that we overshoot maybe, or we overshot and we built too much housing, and clearly that is not where we are. So. Like. I I kind of rank with the idea that we're calling this a subsidy, like we tax new housing to get parks, like. In some cases, we tax new housing to get new housing, that's what inclusionary zoning is. If we're not getting enough, like, if we're looking for ideas to make this better. We should stop taxing new housing and find a different way to fund our parks. I'm not saying we shouldn't fund our parks, but like. We have Melrose districts for a reason, we have bonds for a reason. Like, if this is a. A significant, this doesn't just affect the affordable housing developer, it affects everybody. And I remember when we were talking about extending the.
Can you make a good question, please, so? What are the question?
Can we, can we change this from just having questions now to having discussion?
Question, so how about?
Can we do both though?
I think we want to get all the information out on the table.
Okay, sorry, I'll come back to my speech later.
My only advice is you might wanna, before you deliver it, you might want to open a public hearing. Before you find feedback, typically you want to open a public hearing, get feedback, stakeholders.
I'm gonna let two more commissioners go and then have an open.
Yeah, just.
And then.
I'm just curious, and you mentioned San Jose, and I know they've done a lot in trying to boost what everybody is, the whole state. What are planning commissions doing, every planning commission in the state, or every planning department and every city council doing? Have other cities eliminated park fees? You know?
Uh, I know, I know cities that that do, yeah. Practice has been done.
For Camp, for a city of Campbell, eliminating the park fees would have what effect on the parks generally? Do you have any? Sense of that?
That's that's a big question. I couldn't give a direct answer. I guess I'll say two things. One is, of course. You would see less money come in, so that case projects of a hundred units would be two million dollars less. Now, the argument the other way is these projects can't finance, so if they don't get some sort of subsidy and actually go forward, the money would never come in.
Well, actually, they're not, they're not getting the financing. I could talk here from now until next Wednesday. Uh, with questions about that, and I just wish I knew the development process more. And this, I think I'm gonna get to a question. This is my quick, my quick big speech, maybe it is, I hope it's not. So we have, all government have, we have been working. Giving all kinds of incentives and and. Breaks on fees. To try to enable developers to make their, what the B A A, B A E Urban Economics told us a year ago. Was an eighteen percent profit margin. I don't know if that's net or gross. But we're, we are, we government, we are. Doing all we can to make sure that developers make their eighteen percent. But then they go to the. Yeah, then they go to the lender. And they cannot get the financing. So my question is, have we? Have cities, do cities in general, do they talk to the actual lenders to try to go from that angle? To see how we can get this actually, actually get these housing projects made.
Yeah, I will say that we haven't done a deep dive with numbers. It's a good suggestion. Talked to economists who work in the market, I'll say all lenders. I would differentiate market rate developers and affordable housing developers.
That was my other question. Uh, in terms of nonprofit housing developers, is there a profit margin? I I know they have to have a profit margin, but I imagine it's substantially less. Than for profit developers, is that true or no?
Well, by I I by nature, they're nonprofit, they have to make enough money to pay their staff. In the business of.
But it's gotta be less, right? Yeah, probably a little bit more, yeah. Okay, anyway, I, yeah, you know. That's it, thank you.
How did we do relative to other cities in terms of the number of units? Built and projected compared to the expectation?
Good question. The best I can give you is an anecdotal answer. I haven't pulled all cities. To my, and actually I was talking with our attorney about this earlier. I think all cities are struggling. And, you know, we actually did look at the biggest city in this county, San Jose, you know, folks kind of a. And even they, based on reports I've seen, have not seen any high-density projects come in the last two years. A lot of what you're seeing, if you look north on Bascom, all that stuff was entitled and permitted. Prior to the downturn, uh, but I know they've. Taken some more action similar to what's been proposed here to try and incentivize for high-density development. Uh, the only exception I've heard of is Santa Cruz, for some reason, is doing a lot of housing development. I don't know much about that market. But I'd say within this county, based on talking to my peers. Most of all cities are struggling. With the exception of, and I'll talk to it, cities that. More double down on the low-density housing, so if you look down at like Morgan Hill and some of those areas where they really plan for townhomes on high density, that's penciling. So I think they're doing more there.
That's good input, thank you.
Okay, um, before I open it to public hearing, um, you know, I just want to let you know that not all cities charge the same parking fees like. Cupertino's park fees is, are you guys sitting down? One hundred and eight thousand per you per new unit. I mean, it's like drastically different because. It's so difficult to find space there, you know, and so I have clients who's. Anyway.
Shane, Commissioner, Chair Cam Card, do you want me to finish the presentation first before you open the public hearing or?
Uh, actually, let me pull the, let me pull the commission because that's a great question. Uh, does, what do you guys, what do you guys?
I think I think it'd be good to hear from the public. On this section rather than moving forward on all the topics.
As, yeah, as a respect to the public, so is there anybody in public that would like to address us? Okay, please go ahead. There you go.
Hi there, Commissioner, my name is John Pringle. Okay, perfect. My name's John Pringle, and I appeared before you, uh, in October representing the. Owners of a mixed-use side at Bascom and Campbell Avenue. And we were proposing a two hundred. Plus unit project. In two phases, and first of all, we've, I wanted to mention. I don't think they need accolades, but your staff has been very open, great communication and. Real professional, I appreciate that. So a lot of good things have come up here, and I I want to commend. You for in the packet, there's a citation about, there's an article, a a summary of exactly what is wrong. With the production of housing in California called streamlining. It's in the back, it's a, it's a wonderful piece, I encourage you to read it. And it perfectly describes a predicament that market rate developers. Like myself, I do entitlement, but I'm also a developer, uh, face today. And, um. In in the, uh, to kind of bottom line at, we we have two, two or three things going on simultaneously. We're encouraged to build more density. But we're penalized by the requirement to deliver below-market-rate housing. Which is a subsidy to those residents, which adds costs to make our projects infeasible. So to give you an example, on the preliminary underwriting of our project. The, uh, below-market-rate requirement, uh, initially presented to me by staff. Is a twelve million dollar reduction in value. Simply by taking the number of below-market-rate units, taking the difference between. The rent, we can, the maximum rent we can charge them, and today's market rent, which I'm basing it on other. Class A new projects right down the street. And that at a capitalization rate in the market today is twelve million dollars. Then I add. Park fees. In Campbell, a four and a half million. So now I'm at a seventeen million dollar reduction in value. I'm giving you accurate numbers. Our project will cost one hundred and thirty million to build. I priced it completely twice. I have a bid for one hundred and thirty-five million. I'm running out of time, if you allow me. And and the project, therefore, is not, is not feasible, something has to give. It's a great site, can't, and what we are trying to achieve is simply a global six percent return on our money. I'd love to make eighteen percent, we're not even close. We're hoping that the project is worth more than the debt when we finish it. In a hundred and thirty million dollar project, you have to go raise fifty million dollars of equity. So to Mr. Uh, Eastwood's point is projects take time now. And we have all of these other issues to deal with, but what I would encourage this group and and Rob is not to a summary yet. We need, a density bonus would help, but we need to build with wood frame. This is a large project, right? I'm talking large projects. Can't build them out of concrete. Concrete's thirty percent more. So and and concrete construction in Campbell is not feasible now, and I don't think it will be in seven years. So you'll never get units built. On market rate during this Rena cycle out of concrete in Campbell. I just don't see it happen.
How many stories are you thinking?
It's it's five, five floors over two levels of parking. So.
And that's the limit, right? Cause you talked.
I I can build to seventy-five feet.
So, but but when you're saying about using concrete. That that means you go higher with concrete.
You go higher with concrete, but I.
We don't want, but it's not that we don't want higher, but but.
I don't need to go higher, I can build more density. I have, I just completed in in twenty twenty-two, a hundred and ninety unit acre project, that's again, five stories. With a sixty-foot height limit, so I'm glad if I, I'll take my seventy-five foot limit, but please. Give me more density, that helps, but it doesn't help if I have to take this below-market-rate program as structured. Is kills the deal. And that's all I'm saying, and I'm no different than any other big developer that's gonna look at what the ask is.
You would rather pay in Luffy rather than deal with.
Well, I'd rather pay in Luffy, right? San Jose and Luffy I paid was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for each below-market-rate unit. That went in a bucket, they gave it to affordable housing developer. I understand we don't have that here. I would say there's a combination. The very, very low units kill us, the moderate units today. There's very low, low and moderate, right? The moderate units today are very close to market rent. So what's the point of a moderate unit? Well, they'll forever be under HUD's rent increase guidelines. So in a way, you're putting those under a rent control. Which today is really okay, cause I can get the project probably built. But I'm suggesting to you that my threshold, I'm not penciling out close to a six percent return on cost. Uh, I'm in the low fives, and I have seventeen million dollars of value gone from park fees. Which, by the way, San Jose has targeted twenty-five large projects to eliminate park fees. Including, I'm not including downtown San Jose, which has eliminated park fees and eliminated below-market-rate. Housing requirements, as long as you build twelve stories or more. So, and San Jose has also targeted twenty projects for reducing the BMR requirements. So to make your Rena numbers, something's gotta give, cause right now your own analysis is saying you're gonna be two thousand units short. And, uh. Uh, by twenty thirty-one, and, you know, I'm in the market rate business. And our rents have gone down, by the way, and are still down twenty, we're down twenty percent. Uh, at one point, uh, so the market, when you put units in the market, it calms the market down. And it's a supply-demand issue. So they, that's my comment.
Question, please. So I I'm the fact that you say you want more density, but. But you 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 don't, you don't, you're not talking about going higher, you're talking about getting more density by having less below-market-rate units, is that what you're saying?
Putting in, I'll, I will shrink some of the units we have, I'll have a little less open space plans. And I, I mean, I have to look at our architecture.
So, so we we don't have.
Density doesn't solve my problem on its own.
But but we we would approve, uh, smaller units. I mean, it's not like we wouldn't give you more density on smaller units, right? But you're also saying the the open space area, if the two is an issue, is it really an issue?
Well, yeah, I want, we want this, you know, our ownership wants to own this project for twenty years. When they intend to, uh. I'll lead the effort to seek out capital that agrees to a long-term pool. It's gonna be a family project with a partner that agrees to own it for years and years, which is. A nice thing, by the way, and there are a few developers in Bay Area that do that, long-term families you've heard of. And, um, so we'll look at higher density, but I I need relief from this owner's below-market-rate requirement. Giving me more units with more below-market-rate requirement. Doesn't help our fundamental problem today. But the market is turning, and your comment about the cycle is a very interesting one, because we have started an upcycle. And all we have to worry about now is tariffs in Japan, a trade war with all of our suppliers, Canada shutting off our lumber. And, you know, all this stuff, so you you have to get to a basic return. It's it's a crazy time to be in this business, and that's why so many large developers are not building.
Okay, I've got another question for you.
This is all later in the the discussion, but, uh, so if I understood you correctly. The the fundamental problem is the the chunk that the below-market-rate mandates take out of here, um, the value, so even if you have more units, it still takes a chunk out of that. That's just, that that's the key thing. If, um. Counting smaller units as half-units for density purposes, is that, is that something that's useful to market rate development?
It is, but you know, the 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 whole world is, doesn't want to live in a five-hundred-square-foot apartment. And I have those in San Jose in that hundred and ninety. Unit density per acre project, which is hundred and thirty units and two-thirds of an acre. And the average unit size is is under seven hundred square feet. Our unit size here is closer to eight hundred. And we're planning for studio, one bed and one bath, two bed and two baths. And I think we popped in some three bedrooms, so a a diverse unit mix. Plus, I'm putting in more parking here because we think people in Campbell want parking and don't want to see cars everywhere. In downtown San Jose, you know, there's no parking required anymore. Well, I disagree with that. I think people are gonna use, they're gonna commute, they're gonna keep vehicles. Uh, I don't know who's gonna outlaw them, somebody will try to, but but we need to park people and put them under underground. And, you know, this location across from Prune Yard, you can't have a better location.
Okay.
For apartments.
Is, or do, any other question?
Yeah, I got another question, yeah. So the seventeen million that is like, it's not a big number, right? It will, it's like a hundred and eighty unit, uh, complex, right?
Is that what? Yeah, to, it, with our maximum density and bonuses, we get to, I think. Rob and Daniel felt we could get to two hundred and three or two hundred and five units.
And then, how many are below-market rates of fifteen or twenty percent?
Well, it's. Looks like we have, we would have a twenty, because we're doing it in phases. We would have approximately twenty-five units, uh, using the density bonus. Uh, I believe that's right, Rob, using the density bonus, uh, program as designed now. And there were seventeen of those were very low. And that, those, those are the ones that are discounted up to twenty-three hundred a month below market rate.
So I just, my question is, is there some middle ground? It's like. Yes, we can, we can't give up the, we can't have you give up the seventeen million, to pay the, out seventeen million. But it's like if there was a middle ground where the the below-market rates were less, the density was more. And that you could end up only being eight or ten million instead of seventeen million.
Right, I think there is a middle ground, and I would propose that you. Uh, allow developers to propose a middle ground, and we do it under a development agreement. And, uh, you know, I need time to raise fifty million, I'm a little bit worried about getting an entitlement. By the way, we already spent a million dollars. Get an entitlement and then have it expire in two years, given this current administration, I'm not trustful of of. The horizon, however, my owners are trustful. That, you know, they want to own this project long-term, but maybe an office building is a better thing. I, I'm an apartment guy, and I think this is a great house.
Okay, um, I have a question too, and it's regarding, so we always use units. Per acre as a, you know, measure of density. I'm wondering if instead of units per acre, we should consider switching to bedrooms per acre, so. Because you build a five, a five-bedroom house, you still have one kitchen. And, you know, um, several bath, which are the most expensive part of building a house versus. Uh, studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms that still have that kitchen or kitchenette. Is, is that a possibility where it would allow you?
I I I don't think so, that in our, in our language is really units per acre, and we, you know, put in more. It costs you in a way more, because, I mean, our our cost right now is six, six hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to build. This, this, you know, quite a bit more than single-family homes, that's the problem with multifamily housing today. It costs so much, and of course, that that includes the four point five million apart fees. Then it includes interest costs, and, you know, it's all in.
Yeah.
That's what it costs. So I I think the per-unit method is the way to do it, now there's. You know, staff has talked to me about the opportunity to, uh, build the smaller units. And frankly, I gotta get there to look at that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for helping us understand all of this from your perspective, it's very helpful. Um, and I was also doing the math on the, it's like around a thousand square feet to build, kind of based on what you've said.
Pardon me?
It's, it sounds like it's around a thousand dollars per square foot to build.
Yeah, a little bit under that, it's it's coming out to, well, remember, you're, we're building two levels of below-grade garage. So that cost is being added into the apartments, so we're we're around, uh. With the units about, let's see, averaging about seven seventy, costing six hundred and forty thousand a unit, what's that, eight, nine hundred dollars a foot? Nine hundred dollars a foot, yeah, it's significantly more than single-family homes.
That's very useful to know, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Jim.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jim Sullivan.
You had it on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jim Sullivan, members of the commission, it's good to see all of you.
Welcome.
So I wanna start out by saying that Rob and his team at the planning department, I think, did a tremendous job reaching out to developers, both market rate and nonprofit, and really, and it wasn't just lip service, it was, you know, give us your ideas, right? We're trying to tackle a problem that we're seeing. I was here for all of the RENA, you know, meetings that you guys went through, and, and congrats to you guys and your city council for being one of the first cities getting your thing approved. And I can tell you, I do developments in a bunch of cities, this is happening throughout the Bay Area, right? So I see townhome developments going forward, you know, duets, obviously, single-family detached homes. I see just a complete stoppage of doing like podiums or Texas raps, things like, I mean, things that when you're in the sixty-unit-per-acre range. It's just, and as John rightly pointed out, it just kinda doesn't pencil out. So a couple of things that I, and by the way, I am bringing two projects forward, two additional projects besides the Llewellyn and Virginia Avenue. So I'm gonna put another hundred-and-eleven projects here into the city of Campbell sometime soon. The deferment of fees, right now, the park fee, as I think Commissioner Bookbinder had, had pointed out, was one of the largest fees that the city charges, right? So for townhomes, twenty-two-thousand dollars a unit and some change. And I think unless it was a misprint, it said those fees are due at final map recordation. Stephen Rose, correct me if I'm wrong. And that, in my opinion, isn't fair, right? It really should be done at the very earliest, a building permit, right? As you pull a building permit, you pay a fee. But really, theoretically, it should be a certificate of occupancy. Nobody's living there, you're not creating the need for park space until a family kind of moves in there, right? And that helps the bottom line, particularly if you have a one-hundred-unit project. The other thing that I wanted to offer was, and, and I was the big person behind this. Rob's mentioned the city trust fund, right? So Mezuray is gone, they were playing with coming, coming up with another one, and then they said, now time's not right, we're not gonna do it. State funding is down, federal funding, forget about for the next, you know, three and a half years. And so the city, what can the city do to collect funds? To help out the nonprofit builders, to create more affordable housing units? And in my opinion, so you guys are changing something, and when the new affordable housing ordinance comes into play from now on, anything I think up to point four-nine, so if you, if your seven-point-four-nine units are, are required, you would pay a point four-nine fee, which could be several hundred thousand of dollars. What you, the mistake that the city made was, they said if it's point five or higher, we're just going to, you know, go up. Again, I don't think that that's fair. I would like to see any decimal point is money that comes in to the city's pocket, right?
As an in-lufi.
It's not even an in-lufi, it's because you're still providing the seven units, right? If it's like, like, let's just say seven-point-nine, right?
Okay.
The city will say you have to go to eight. I'm saying, keep it seven, and then that point nine, pay that in a fee, you write the city a check for seven-hundred-thousand dollars. In the case of a townhome, the city has that in their pocket. But what I'd really like to see, and you could do this with a development agreement, by the way, is for the city, every developer, in my opinion, is gonna want to do at least ten percent affordable housing, because they get density bonus law. You remember all the waivers and the concessions and things like that? That's a really good thing for developers nowadays to have. So developers want to provide ten percent. If they could fee out of the rest, they probably would. And that could be like, I'm just gonna take the Polte project, right? So there's sixteen affordable units that are gonna be built. If we only had to do, you know, ten, and we feed out of six, we would write the city a check. I mean, Polte would have written the city a check for four million dollars, in my opinion. Still providing ten percent of the units onsite, but now the city has four million dollars that, I don't know if that swings, you know, the deal for the VTA units, you know, to be constructed. But being creative, right? And, and with the state and the feds kind of out of the picture, and other cities have done this. I know that the city of Fremont collected a lot of fees early on, and finally went out to the nonprofit builders and said, what do you guys need to build, you know, your, your projects? And they had, you know, three, four-hundred units built in Fremont over a, you know, four- or five-year period, all affordable. So with that, but I, I do, and I will say also that Campbell, even though the numbers kind of look bleak, I think that you are doing, somebody had asked the question, where are we relative to other cities? The only city that I know that on a percentage basis is doing better is maybe Mill Peters, and I'm doing some projects there right now. But you guys are doing way better than Campbell on a percentage base, or not, you're doing way better than San Jose on a percentage basis, they're not even at close to ten percent of the RENA obligations, and you guys are a little bit lower. With that, if there's any questions that you guys have, be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions for Jim?
I think, yes. Jim, as long as you're there, so, and, and this comes up a little bit later, but the idea of pooling, pooling the in-lufi's, a bunch of different projects. Did you, I, did you look at that, does that sound pretty feasible to you at all?
Uh, well, when, when you're saying, I think, pooling
I don't have the info right here, yeah, they
Like, just collecting from other develop, you know, other developments throughout the city, yeah. I mean, just the
So that's for that a hundred percent affordable project could be funded with this?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, there's, I, I think that the thing that's keeping those people, and I'm, I'm not talking about the market rate, you know, the, the, what John was, was dealing with, I'm talking about the hundred percent affordable projects, right? They need a boost. The city has the ability, not even, I, I don't think that Fremont gifted the front, the funds to a nonprofit builder. I mean, it was set up as a, you know, I don't know, thirty-year or forty-year loan-type situation, but it's just to get the project, you know, out of the ground, you know, and, and built. And so, you know, and then the other thing, there was something else with regard to park fees. I know that we kind of talked about that, deferring that, but the affordable housing. I just look at the two projects that had been recently approved, and two other ones that I'm gonna be coming forward with. It's a total of over two-hundred-and-fifty units, right? So fifteen percent of that, right, is twenty-five plus twelve, you know, thirty-seven affordable units, right? Saying if you did twenty-five units, which would be ten percent, and then allowed a fee mechanism, you know, you guys raised your fees, it's gonna be close for townhomes, it's gonna be close to, you know, a million bucks, you know, difference in revenue between a, you know, a moderate unit, or certainly a low unit in a market-rate unit. And I just think, you know, I mean, if, if you had a check for ten million dollars, you could help out a lot more than twelve home owners.
Absolutely, you can build a hundred percent affordable for a much better rate than hard, affordable, hard market rate, you know, so.
Yeah.
It would be
Yeah, and your park fees, you know, I understand John's point, I mean, park fees do add up a lot, but relative, I mean, Mr. Chair, you, you brought up yourself, you know, Cupertino's park fees, right? Campbell's, Campbell's fees are, are reasonable within the, kind of the South Bay market.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it. So, staff, maybe we can continue on with the presentation?
I'll propose, I'll go ahead and, peer discretion, I can continue. I know we've broached in probably all the topics, maybe it makes sense just to go through the presentation, and we'll just come back on your thoughts and deliberations. Okay. All right, moving on to the second bucket, I think this was alluded to by one of our public speakers. So while generally the narrative has been high-density housing is very hard to pencil due to some market factors, and in some instances, need to use density bonus, we do see potentially some opportunities in select areas on the commercial corridors where at sixty dwelling units per acre, for all the requirements, it's hard for these projects to pencil. If there was an upzoning to seventy-five units per acre, that actually could make some of these projects pencil. Mr. Pringle speaks to one project, close to the pruney, and I know we do have a number of areas on Hamilton and Bascom that are zoned at sixteen units per acre. And these were high-density areas, not really next to single-family residential. But if we are able to look at those target areas, do some upzoning, that actually helps these project, projects pencil, and that could be something to look at. So tonight, and I'm not bringing any specific sites to you, but I think the concept of, of knowing if there is a market for high-density, if the density is just a little bit higher, staff would do more research and come back to the planning commission council with recommendations.
Very good.
I'll go ahead and move on to the next one, so this is a missing middle, and as pretext to this, and saluted by your public speakers. So this is actually penciling at this point, high-density is not. We are seeing a number of applications, Mr. Sullivan referred to a lot of townhome applications. And we are getting a fair amount of interest in what we were calling the SB six-eighty-four projects. So these are new laws that allow you to develop up to ten units on small lots. Right now, it's in multifamily districts, that's expanding out to certain single-family areas. We are seeing a lot of interest in that area. I went recently to a ULI Housing in the Bay Conference, where they got all the housers together up in San Francisco, and had a lot of discussion on what's penciling, what's not. I'll say there were a fair number of speakers that said, for the next few years, it's gonna be really hard to do big projects, but a lot of folks are saying this is the market that you could look into and develop. So these are the small, up to ten-unit projects, sort of microdevelop. So the, the next three suggestions are sort of what are things we can do to sort of tap into that market, help it if it's opening up. So the first one would be, and the plank, I should remember this, our inclusionary housing ordinance, it's graduated. We expanded from ten down to five units, you're required to have inclusion requirements. For the smallest projects, five and six units today, you can just pay a fee. Under the ordinance that's adopted, if you're over six units, seven to nine, because the fifteen percent rounds to one, you are required to provide one inclusionary unit. Given, and as alluded to by the speaker, we're still growing our housing trust fund, and to put more monies in that fund, and to help this market, where it is a bit harder to finance these small projects. Staff is proposing considering extending that in-lufi, five, six, all the way up to nine units. So any project under ten units, rather than providing one unit onsite, will instead provide fees. This would be more of opening more fees coming into our housing trust fund.
And what would the fee be?
The, I'm gonna look to Stephen to answer that question, the exact number is what you're asking?
How is it calculated?
It, it's, well, it's calculated based on the percentage, fifteen percent affordable requirements. Often, I don't have that number in my hand, but based on that obligation, there's a, there's an in-lufi-out component.
But it would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? We're talking like two-twenty, two, two-fifty per unit, or not, or?
Yeah, right under the meat, gave you the wrong answer, I'm gonna ask Senior Planner Stephen Rose if he can wait.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we established our new housing in lufi program, it was, it's, there's a formula, but the best way to imagine it's sixty dollars per square foot that, that they'd be providing for, multiplied against the total project area. So it's not intuitive to imagine it like the, the unit that you're not providing it, but based on the total aggregate area, floor area that you are providing, that's what the basis is, and how it's calculated.
Six per square foot.
Right, so it's, it's, it's a little bit more challenging to tell you on a per-unit basis what it'd be, because it depends on the overarching size of the project, and how, what your average unit sizes are.
Give us an example, you know, let's use it.
So, so if you're gonna build like nine units at a thousand square feet per unit, you'd be paying five-hundred-and-forty thousand.
Yeah, I think when, when we had adopt, when we established the fee, the example which we had provided was an eighty-nine-unit project built with a one-thousand-square-foot average unit size. In that particular case, the project would be paying a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar fee.
Wait, wait.
No.
No, no, that doesn't exist. You said eighty-nine
Well, I'm sorry, that, that's for the fractional obligation, so you have to do the whole formula, sorry, I, I skipped a few steps there. So for a point-three-five of a unit, they'd be paying a fractional amount of, of the obligation, so.
But Stephen, what would the total fee be for that example?
If the whole thing was in lufi, what would it be?
Well, you'd, well, you'd multiply, in that particular case, an eighty-nine-unit project was, would be required to provide fourteen inclusionary units. So that fourteen inclusionary units, we have to bust out a calculator here, real quick. So fourteen in- inclusionary units at a thousand. I probably wanna get back to you guys, I probably wanna get back to the commission to answer this question more specifically.
What is it?
But, but, hold on, Stephen, is it, is it sixty dollars per square foot on the entire project? Or is it just for the fourteen units?
It, it, well, if you're feeding out, it depends on what they're feeding out, if you're feeding out a fractional obligation, it'd be based on
Well, let's say all fourteen units.
Yeah, so in this particular ca, in that case, it'd be sixty dollars, which would be the rate, multiplied by fourteen, divided by fourteen, multiplied by the overall project square footage of the project at large, would equal their obligation.
Okay, so it's multiplied by the square footage of the entire project?
Correct.
So what's a lot? Five-point-three-four million, yeah, that sounds about right, because for my, for my little nine-unit project, it was five-hundred-and-forty thousand.
Yeah. So in-lufi unit, to answer Commissioner Sisser's question, in-lufi unit is when you pay money, you stop providing
No, I know what the in-lufi, I didn't know what the rate was.
Or the rate is sixty dollars?
I didn't understand that they actually paid based on the entire project.
That, that is what they're saying, yeah.
That seems like a penalty for building more units.
Is that the normal file that's used?
I guess if I can help, so the fifteen percent inclusionary is, is a pretty standard requirement across the jurisdictions. That fifteen percent doesn't go to twenty, if you build a bigger project, it's basically based on your unit count that you're proposing.
But is, is the, is the fact of paying the in-lufi rate on the entire project kind of a standard way that is done? Versus just figuring out an in-lufi rate for, for units that are being, not being built?
Well, the only I'll say to start is, if I reflect back to when we had this discussion last year in the Nexus Study, and we looked, tried to look at every jurisdiction and how they calculated in lufi's, was no golden rule. So, I mean, we did deep dive research, we had the A E advise us, this is the methodology.
Yeah, so, so if, so the reason, you know, since they're going with the entire, they're using sixty, if they were gonna go with fourteen, they would have probably used six-hundred, you know, so.
I understand it.
At the end of the day, yeah, at the end of the day, fifteen percent.
Can I, just, so Rob, just a real general question that I had, in-lufi, in talking to affordable housing advocates, have you found them to be in favor of in-lufi's in general, or do they, would they rather see the developers actually build, you know, some of the projects?
I, you know, I, I'm a redevelopment director, I'm a four-house developer, but I, I'd say, a representative of affordable housing industry, the more money the city has in its trust fund, that it can subsidize an affordable housing project.
Oh, okay.
So the trade-offs are this, with inclusionary housing ordinance, rebuild them onsite, when is, they're, they're built right?
Actually built.
There's no delay.
Yeah.
You're there. I mean, they're harder to manage, we have a below-market-rate unit program, and they're dispersed, and that's good for not concentrating affordable requirements. So their immediate dispersed management is, is higher, we have to have an administrator manage all these dispersed units. On the other hand, if you pay fees, it, it does help us take and leverage and get economies of scale. And typically, you get more units in the end, but there's a delay, building a hundred percent affordable projects.
Right.
I guess looking at it from the perspective of the public comments that we heard, if, if you're gonna build a unit, like we heard, it's gonna cost eight, nine-hundred dollars per square foot, so it'll end up being like an eight-to-nine-hundred-thousand-dollar So it'll end up being like an eight to nine hundred thousand dollar unit versus, if you're gonna pay the in lieu fee, it sounds like it's about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars per unit that you would end up paying. So it's like substantially less. And you're not basically investing in a below-market rent unit and going forward with that negative ROI.
Just to check your math there, sixty dollars comparing nine hundred dollars a square foot for construction costs and sixty dollars a square foot for in lieu fees, wouldn't that be like for a thousand square foot?
Well, no, it's not sixty dollars per square foot for the, like fourteen units in that last example. It's sixty dollars per square foot for the entire, the, the at-market and below-market rent square footage that's built.
Maybe Stephen said he could come back with some numbers. I think the table format.
That it would cost differently in each case, yeah.
Maybe having the table format, like break down the cost structure of a five-unit versus a seven and nine that we could look at.
You're making a couple of units way, like way less profitable versus adding a fee to all the units in the developer.
At the end of the day, if you are doing different units, your efficiency comes down. If you're doing same thing over and over and over again, your efficiency goes up. That's why a hundred percent affordable unit can bring those units to the market at a cheaper rate because they're only dealing within one, you know, bureaucracy. Whereas when you're doing affordable, as well as market rate, all in one project, you're dealing with two different bureaucracies and, and it's not just the money, it's also the time. And it's also the, the delay that it gives you. Those are huge to developers. Anyway, okay, so we can move on.
All right, action two. This one should be a bit more straightforward. So the city does have undergrounding utility requirements. When you come in and build, the obligation is to take utilities on your frontage and underground them under aesthetic principles of trying to get overhead lines underneath. Sure, two things with this. Number one, generally, it's been my observation, a lot of projects come in and demonstrate it's practically and financially very difficult to do this, because the lines are often connected beyond the frontage and dealing with PGD makes it very difficult. Commission might recognize, you've seen a lot of requests for variances and waivers over the years. I can't think of any instance where they actually were denied. When you get to small projects where the frontage is much smaller, it gets much more infeasible, impractical, and probably impossible. So I think recognizing that, staff's recommendation is just to go ahead and waive utility underground requirements for the small projects under ten units, recognizing the practical infeasibility of likely doing.
Cool. You see, yeah.
And last but not least, you might remember this discussion, I believe came up with Daniel's Omnibus Miscellaneous Ordinance. We do have a new state law, which I've already alluded to, coming into effect, which expanded six eighty-four projects to single-family neighborhoods. Per the state law, cities can or cannot allow JDUs and ADUs in these small housing projects. The city currently has an interim ordinance that doesn't allow any ADUs whatsoever. I think that was a conservative approach. We're a bit concerned if you do ten units on a small lot, you add an ADU to JDUs, some practical infeasibility and questions on meeting our zoning standards and that. Staffs looked into it more, and I believe at, at minimum, a JDU is very feasible to do. JDUs are built within the four corners of a housing construction. So staff is recommending on the eleven twenty-three, six eighty-four projects to allow JDU projects. Again, this could help projects to pencil. We see a lot of projects that come in with a number of units and they just add ADUs on, JDUs on top of those, because they're more open to market. It can help those project pencil better.
Would they count as additional units or no, the JDUs?
They do not.
Okay, so.
They don't count for RENA? For the RENA.
They, they do, to just clarify, they do count for the regional housing needs allocation, but they do not count against the total number of allowable units of ten. So when jurisdictions choose to allow ADUs, they don't count against the ten total.
It's a win-win.
Right.
Very good.
For the smaller housing projects, are the, can the developer build the units in phases?
It could, it'd be often, I mean, these are often smaller lots. I mean, for example, and, and Mr. Sullivan can speak to it, with the large townhome projects, there are phases coming in. It's just be hard to imagine on a small lot, how many phases there could be.
But that's, it's possible for a developer to build it. I mean, I'm just thinking like the financing and everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't think of a technical reason why not. It just seems more like.
But code-wise.
We, yeah, we do allow for phasing of projects. So the each individual development phase would need to be completed with twelve months of the preceding phase. And they would need to somehow address any affordability obligations of it, which might complicate matters in particular as it relates to a smaller project. Because we can't allow for C A U to defer all of your affordable requirement to the lighter phases unless, of course, maybe it's an afford, a density bonus project, which is maybe something we'd need to look at at a case-by-case basis.
So you said the second phase has to be completed within a year of the first phase?
Yeah, kind of an interesting section of our code dealing with permit entitlements. We spoke to it earlier, where, you know, the director can grant a twelve-month extension. Well, the original, when you originally get granted approval of a project, the code allows for phased projects where each phase, provided that each phase could be twelve months further out than the last. So you could have a project that's approved with multiple phases, and there's no real technical limit in our code, where you could have each phase occurring within a twelve-month window of the last. So you can't, you can't say, I'm gonna do phase one in, in, in twenty twenty-five, and I'll come back and do phase two in twenty twenty-seven. That won't work. But if you were to do phase two in twenty twenty-six, that, that's viable. And then the same would apply to eleven twenty-three projects.
Yeah, and larger projects, is that right?
And larger projects as well.
Well, that might be something to look at, because I could imagine that a developer would want some return on an initial phase before building the second phase, rather than doing that entire investment out once, or, or, or being obligated to complete it within twelve months. I would say everything we've heard around the uncertainty these days, it's like the bigger your project, the more you want that uncertainty to come down before you're gonna move forward. But you might move forward if you had more flexibility in how you were operating with the phases.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree, you know, and you mentioned the gold world, flexibility. You know, if you provide flexibility, I think more people will take the plunge, you know, and, and come in for applications, because they know they're not gonna get timed out, you know, at the end. Imagine if you ran out of money and you had to sell your project, you know? I mean, it's entitled, but you can't, you don't have the money to finish it, you know, or to, to actually construct it, you know? So these things will give us potential developer certainty. This is one of the major items you need to have them to take a chance and do business in our city. That commentary.
Can we, can we add that to feature?
Good, yeah, I guess my thought was, if, almost at the end, if you want to go back and we can just go through each slide and any feedback you have, we can just encapsulate it.
Well, why don't you finish your presentation and then, you know, we will, thank you.
All right.
I have a lot of opinions, we'll save them for the end.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, last but not least, so this one is a bit speculative, but we thought in a tough market, why not be creative? And I'll start off by saying it has some legal logistic practical challenges. So take that with a grain of salt, might evaporate in the thin air. But the thought is, so there's, I mean, three ways to inclusionary. One is inclusionary housing ordinance, you build on-site fifteen percent. That's one approach. The other approach is fee out, give the money to the city, they pull enough money and they build. So this would be the kind of, I'll just use my own term, the kind of missing middle, where you took two to three projects and their inclusionary housing obligations. And you had a site available, where you had a affordable housing developer, rather than take the money in and wait to pull enough, rather than disperse those, you could pool the inclusionary, transfer it to a sending site, a hundred percent affordable projects. And usually, they can put in their own financing and get enough economies of scale to end up with more units than otherwise you could. So that's the idea. There are, I had a conversation earlier today with our city attorney on challenges with that. There's a couple of legal questions to come up to doing that. And the city would want to make sure that, from a timing standpoint, that the affordable housing project was built commensurate with the market rates. Yeah, so at this point, this is just a thought process. We wanted to be transparent. We're gonna look more into it legally and practically if we could do so. But again, it was, given this market economy and how hard it is to stand up affordable housing projects, we might have one or two case studies where a project coming in now is actually reserving land and saying that's available for an affordable housing developer. You could get creative with different projects to make this work. It's just something we should.
So instead of in lieu, they could be giving that, a portion of the property, say, here's my contribution.
I mean, in effect, it's, it's one developer would provide land, and then three other developers would provide sort of a fee out directly to that affordable housing developer online.
Right.
It's the balance between providing onsite, providing the city in lieu fees, and just trying to make these transactions work.
Can they, can they trade, you know, for example, is trading units a possibility?
Well, that was the idea.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like a carbon, like a carbon credit, but in.
Yeah, it's almost, it's almost a transfer of development rights in some ways.
So you're talking about pulling the in lieu fees?
Yeah.
So what you're talking about, right?
Well, so there's an inclusionary obligation with each project, right, fifteen percent? If you had a hundred unit project, they have to have fifteen units inclusionary. You're taking that obligation and transferring it and sending it to an affordable housing developer, which would, this would be a payment. Instead of the city, we go to the affordable housing developer, and they would use that with their own funds to build.
But those pay, you're talking about payments, but is that the payment, is a different payment schedule? Or is it gonna be the in lieu fees that, that they would pay? I, I don't understand how the transfer works.
Yeah, well, these are some of the things we gotta work out. So the concept is you're transferring your inclusionary obligations.
These are like carbon credits.
A little bit, yeah. But if you had a willing affordable housing developer and they're looking to not wait for the city to build its trust fund, and the timing was right, you're transferring the, those obligations to that developer in the form of payments from the market rate, so they can, they can build the project.
Would this be both for rental and for sale projects?
I haven't thought that far.
My take is on rental.
Yeah.
Not the affordable units and rentals. You know, that would be my take, is like apartments, affordable units make perfect sense. Below-market rate for sale, you know, it's like I could, I could personally rationalize that, yeah, guy builds forty units and there's gonna be six units, okay? Just take that all market rate and then transfer the six. But rentals is, affordable rentals is really important. You know, I think it's like, and it's, it's like you're transferring it from a partial, a rental place that has partial affordable rentals to a rental place, because affordable, hundred percent affordable is always rental. But we don't, there's nobody's building hundred percent for sale homes, in my estimation, right? It's, it, they're rentals.
Okay, they're rentals.
Right? So it's like you're just transferring from those rentals over there to a hundred percent rental. And it seemed less, I would be less interested in, in, in doing the transfers for rental places. That's, that's just like.
Commissioner Bookwinder, you had, you hand up? Or, or opinion?
I have, oh. We are. Staff's, staff has finished the presentation? Uh, we have, yes.
Do we, do we need to open up the comment period?
Do another round of public comment now that we're finished with this?
Yes, yes. Okay, so the staff presentation is finished?
Yeah, I guess what I, I mean, it's, it's up to you how you want to conduct at this point. You could have some other suggestions in the back list, like one is not. But I guess it was my suggestion at this time, if you want, if you want to go back to each concept idea and if you want to provide feedback on that.
I think we'd like to do that, but I wanted to open it to public, you know, and see what their input is in regards to what they've heard, so we can be educated a little bit more. So is there more?
Can we speak again?
Yes.
Did I go first?
You go first.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Terrence. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So four quick things, I'm gonna take less than two minutes. The building in phases is a great approach, and I think that you hit it on the head. One of the, and I've done eighty dwelling units per acre, like a Texas rap in Milpitas, three hundred and eighty-nine units. The problem with that is you're building the entire building before you get any, you know, money.
Amazing.
Single-family homes, townhomes, you're selling as you go along, right? So the finances are completely different. There is creatively, you can do phased occupancy in even high-density buildings sometimes with a, with a great city, and Campbell's certainly a great city. Something that John talked about before, and I will say that, that Campbell is not in accord with other cities in the South Bay, is your for-sale housing requires a mix of moderate and low. The low really hurts on for-sale housing. Moderate is not too bad. All the cities do moderate on for-sale. On the rental housing, most cities do low, and Campbell does low and very low. And as John had men- mentioned, the very low is a killer. I understand why Rob and, and the city is doing it that way, because you guys have RENA obligations of all of those categories, and, and the lower ones are harder to get to. Really quickly, on the, a good way to look at like the, the total cost if you're gonna do an in lieu fee, so seven units, essentially fifteen percent of seven is like one point oh five. So basically, seven units is where you're required to do one unit.
Yes.
So if it's two thousand square feet for all seven of those units, right, that's fourteen thousand square feet, times sixty dollars, it's eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for a moderate in lieu fee for that one unit.
And I would pay for the one, the O five still remains, right?
Yeah, if it's seven thousand square feet, times sixty, that's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for one unit, a thousand square feet. But your math was right on for the eight hundred or nine hundred square feet, like about three hundred and forty grand. The last thing I want to say is the transfer of obligation, I think, is great. The problem that I see is when developers are going forward, it's a timing issue, right? A developer doesn't want to write a ten million dollar check when they're still a year and a half away from building. And then when they're ready to write that check, okay, we have it, is somebody else ready to receive it? That's why I was saying, I think it works best to build up that city's trust fund. You know, to have some sort of mechanism. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Pringle?
Okay, well, first, Rob's point about this transfer obligation, I have seen it in action. I entitled and financed a three hundred and fifty unit project in Pleasanton. We had an obligation of forty-five affordable units, BMR units. I, we were offered, I was working for president of a family company, major operator, based in Los Angeles. But we were, we were offered by a firm who actually succeeded in putting together the aggregation of units, fifty thousand a door. We will take, you pay us fifty thousand a door, it was a little less than that. We'll take your forty units of affordable, or be below-market rate units. And we're gonna combine that with a couple other developers, one of which is one of the wealthiest developers here in the Bay Area. But, well, now, one is based in Irvine, California, had two major projects in Santa Clara County. But anyway, it worked. I didn't do it, because in our development agreement with the city, which was a good thing, the city said, if that developer doesn't carry it off, and it was four or five years, you have an obligation, it'll be a recorded obligation, to put the forty units into your current project.
From your stock.
So we decided to pay the eighty thousand dollar in lieu fee per, per affordable. So we decided to pay the eighty thousand dollar in-lu fee per per affordable unit. That worked out to, you know, eighty thousand times forty-five units. We chose to pay that instead of paying this developer or whatever it was, forty-five thousand. But that deal did get together and did get done, I'm saying. And I heard that particular developer that does that has done four or five of these. That was a very large multi-family developer based in San, uh, works in Northern and Southern California. But it does happen and I, I wouldn't say no to ever thinking about that. Uh, number two, the only other thing is I want to reiterate that in the the very low, low, moderate, changing the mix has a huge effect. And the very lows are the killer. Uh, the lows and moderates, allowing us to change that mix significantly helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody online for, no? So I'm going to close the public hearing of that. Okay, so now.
Can I, can I ask one macro question for staff? Uh, the RENA numbers, if we miss them by one unit or a thousand, what is the difference to the city? And is there any granularity about missing the low income number versus the high income number? Like, I just want to understand, like, if we're sitting here trying to make these like macro policy decisions, is our, is it binary? We neither need to get a hundred percent or we might as well have missed all of it? Or is there, are there some sort of steps that we could then be shooting for?
And, well, I know, I'll start. Turn his office away. It's not like horseshoes, so it's not if you're close, you cross over. So generally, I have to cross over. I do seem to remember, I mean, these are like SB thirty-five, their laws, where basically your discretionary abilities as a city go away. Without, we're signing it from memory, I think there's one or two buckets where you have to meet low versus your RENA general. But but generally, the obligation is you have to, it's not if you're close, you have to meet.
Yeah, it is meeting the minimum number.
For all.
Excuse me, it is meeting a minimum number.
For all cases.
Yes.
So we.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, yes, it is. You have to meet the minimum number. There's not a. So if you're close, there's some benefit, it's.
And it's it's not only me and the total number, but also for the income levels.
That's my understanding, yes.
And so if we miss any of them at all, unless we make every single one of them, the same thing will happen to the city.
We don't know what that is.
Well, there's there's different streamlining that depend on how far you've gotten in various levels. Is that, I don't know how to square that with what they just said.
I I mean, SB thirty-five, and if I may, SB thirty-five is an example. There's a test at the midpoint of your planning period, which is the eight-year RENA cycle. And what it pretty much establishes that if you're not hitting fifty percent of your, I I believe you're low and and you're very low income categories, you're just subject to SB thirty-five streamlining. I mean, hitting one less unit than that doesn't change whether or not you're subject to streamlining. If that's the question you're getting at. So I mean, if you were to say sacrifice one category for another, you'd still be subject to SB thirty-five streamlining because you you have to hit it in both the categories. You don't don't get to say, well, if we do a hundred percent of our low and we do zero percent of our very low, we're good. Doesn't work like that. And and not only that, but such a policy would be kind of likely found contrarian to any number of, you know, fair housing laws, affirmatively furthering fair housing policies, which is why you you do want to hit your RENA in each category. You want to meaningfully be trying to achieve all of the numbers that you're obligated to do so.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That was very helpful.
Okay, Commissioner Bookwinder, do you want to start or would you rather?
I would love to start. I may come back around as well. But, uh, so at a macro level, um, I think um, we should really take to heart that what we, the things we were worried about happening when we were coming up with these policies, like the opposite really happened. Um, I really appreciate what staff has brought to us. I think that we could afford to at least set the parameters of what we're thinking about a little broader. For example, like, for example, why not fee out, allow feeing out all, um, BMR requirements and putting them into a housing trust fund? Basically, what is being suggested, um, the the fourth idea was to, you know, pull the money and the issue is the timing. If we just allow, it sounds like having developers who want to fee out their inclusionary requirements and BMR developers who don't have a source of funding, it's like one solution split into two problems. That matches up pretty well. In a broader sense, like, I guess we could ask ourselves, what can we do to streamline everything possible? Like, we are, we are way behind, so we could, for example, reduce our BMR rate. You might think like, well, we need to have low-market rate housing. But it just said, everybody's going to do ten percent BMR in order to get the state density bonus, uh, state density bonus. And fifteen percent of a tiny number is less than ten percent of a larger. So we should at least consider that. There's also, um, I I suggest we should look into what LA did with ED one, where a whole bunch of their moderate income, we know, I don't know. They they walked this back pretty quickly, but they did a variety of streamlining things that allowed uh, developers to do BMR projects. And because, um, moderate income product, um, moderate income projects are actually close to market rate. Market rate developers just built a lot of moderate income projects. And then LA tried to walk it back because they didn't actually want it to work that much, but it did. So the details of ED one are are basically, you get like thirty-day approval on, from all the departments on whatever you're trying to do if you have a BMR project. They they basically streamlined everything, which I think we we streamline a lot of stuff. I'm not sure how much further we could go in that direction. Um, in terms of making it easier to make larger projects, a lot of cities have done single-stair reforms in. Um, this is not saying quickly, um, because I think this would have to go through our fire department. But on buildings over, I want to say three stories. You need to have two means of progress, which means that you have to have uh, two separate stairwells. Um, this is not the case in a lot of places, not the case in most of Europe, it's not the case, I want to say Seattle or other places. And when you don't go through two separate stairwells, you have a lot more usable area. It's not actually more in practice, more dangerous with, if you have sprinklers and so on for fire. This is saying, we may actually want to look at a bunch of places, they're looking at single-stair reforms. There was a bill in the state legislature to look at the state building code for that.
Great idea.
Um, so what else do I have there? But mainly, I think we should really take to heart the idea that, I think what we've been trying to do broadly has been to, I think the way we put it would be to balance the developer benefit from the publisher benefit. And we've made it ideally so that if these projects would pencil, then we're fine. But when the market changes as it has, projects that just pencil absolutely do not happen. So we see as we have all these projects and things don't happen. And changing to a perspective of the public benefit is for homes and trying to make as many things pencil as possible by reducing inclusionary rates, a lot of fee outs, whatever would make more stuff happen, at least in the short term, maybe in the longer term. I think that's where we should start from. Um, I I, so more specifically, I think all the specific things that staff proposed are are generally good ideas, especially allowing JADUs on SB eleven twenty-three projects. And really want to applaud staff for, um, taking the perspective of, well, people are going to probably tear down their houses and then build an SB eleven twenty-three project and should make that like straightforward so they don't tear down the house and then hope they get a permit. Like, like definitely the right approach to take there. But just generally, I would like to go much further. That's where where I'm at on this.
Um, anybody else?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, this was really, been a really good discussion. It's such a complex, terrible, tough thing to grapple with. We've all been doing it. I really appreciate the two developers. And I did look at Adam's links, those, uh, articles are really, really interesting. You know, I browse mostly, I can't read it all, but, uh, really, some eye, some eye-opening things. I guess I would just say, uh, in terms of what the staff, I think, I really commend our staff because I, obviously, they did their homework and they came up with some good ideas and I, and I think they're all good ideas, to be honest. The only one that I grappling with, uh, is the JADUs on the eleven twenty-three. Because we're already talking about quite a bit of density in places that maybe never had the density. But on the other hand, you know, this is a generational change. It's going to take a while while this stuff happening. And we're going into a new era here, uh, density is our destiny kind of a thing. Uh, and it can still be a nice, you know, Campbell and all our cities can still be nice cities and be a nice area, so. Yeah, so I would be in favor of all the ideas that they thought. I I like the idea of the, you know, the pooling idea, I think, would work. I don't want to get to, we got, we got into a lot of detail. We get into some detail work here that I, pretty hard to follow. I don't know if we're going to get into it then, but I, I, so one thing in terms of the in-lu fees, we talk about a lot. You know, we just got to make sure how we do it, how the city does it. Make sure that the in-lu fees we're charging are enough to actually result in the low-market rate housing being developed. And, you know, I know that's a really tough calculation to make, and I think we got to make sure that we're doing that. But we do know, and this is in terms of our own next study that, you know, we talked about a year ago, to be a here in the development, you know, they they penciled out the projects that work. It is the the middle, missing middle of townhomes, five to nine year type places. So if we know what's working, that we should be pushing as much as we can on those areas. And I, and I kind of think we are with some of these ideas, so. I think we're on the right track and I think it'll help, uh, you know, in terms of making our numbers, it's going to be hard for everybody in the last cycle. And I don't, there were less ramifications for not making it to last eight-year cycle. But I think in this, in the state of California, I think three cities hit their number in just a couple of the categories. I don't know if any one city actually hit all their category, all their numbers, so, uh, you know, we got to, obviously, we got to be strong. I know how to pull back and all, but but what happens eight years down the road? It's going to be hard for a lot of these cities to come even close to, like, like Mr. Sullivan mentioned, be close to coming, like to what Campbell's doing, so we're on the right track. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for that. Um. Commissioner.
Yeah, um, first a cou- a couple of questions. The park fees. So the park fees, I, my question is, where do the park fees go? Does it go into a separate fund or does it go in in, or some of it or all of it go into the general fund to to, um, support the public works uh, maintenance of parks, uh, and and the increased costs based on inflation? So so to me, it's like a difference of, I give up the park fees if, if the city can afford to give up the park fees, okay? But if the park fees are being used to pay for our regular maintenance of parks and if the park fees goes away, there's going to be a deficit in the budget because of that. Or are the park fees for special projects that are over and above what we normally do with parks? Can you answer that question?
Okay, I'll start and staff can jump in if I'm missing anything. So park fees, they're impact fees, so you have to use them to provide park space or improve park space for new residents. So it's in a special funds. Uh, we're actually required to track the monies in those funds and report out the monies that are used. And if technically they're not used within a certain period, you're obliged to give them back. So the requirement under the Quimby Act, to which we collect park fees, is there use either buy parkland, improve parkland or or do something that makes more parkland available to new residents?
Does it have to be within a district where the funds were collected from or not?
It is not. I know there's a state bill, uh, that was proposed or is proposed that might require, um, actually, I think some, there's some changes to law around adjacency to parks and so forth. At this point, there's not.
Because, you know, my my take on that is, I don't know of any, you know, we're we're stuck at at certain amount of green space here. There's no plans for more parks, okay? So, um, if you, if you, if the park fees keep us from getting stuff built, okay, we end up with zero park, more park fees anyway, okay? So if we get more stuff built and the question is, can we live with less park fees? You know, because, well, there's going to be a hundred thousand people or a hundred two thousand people in the next five to ten years. And it's like the parks can handle that. So I would, as as long as it's not, you know, part of the general park maintenance budget, I I'm good with reducing or defer and or deferring all or most of the park fees for a while. Because it seems like to me, we could probably live without those, okay? Um, and we're going to live with, we're not going to get them anyway if we can't get stuff built. The, um, I I want to take a couple, I want to take issue with a couple of things first, you know, and I know it's just, it's a moot moot point now because, you know, Rob, you put up a thing saying we were going to try and build five thousand units. We we were never really, in my estimation, trying to build five thousand units. We we made parcels available with an extra buffer. It was like, it's like a sixty percent buffer because you can't convert all of them. And that to get to three thousand, you needed parcels with five thousand or six thousand. So we we never really were looking to build five thousand. We were looking to build a twenty-nine hundred units. So it's just my my little thing about that. And the other thing is the middle, the missing middle. You you define the missing middle as small developments. I don't believe the missing middle is because it's got eight or ten units. You can have an eight or ten townhouse unit that costs as much as the one that's got a hundred of them, okay? And if it's one point five million, it's not missing middle, all right? So I would rather, you know, to me, missing middle, we don't know. I mean, it'd be built, trying to build a, um, a house that's only going to cost six or eight hundred thousand dollars because the people in moderate income would then afford it, okay? Uh, so that's just my take on that kind of thing in terms of what we're trying to do with the missing middle. So I don't think it has to do with how many units are in the development. Um, uh, the, um, the question of, uh, you know, we do say, you know, doing the in-lu fees, I'd be in favor of reducing in, you know, uh, uh, you know, combining in-lu fees to build affordable housing, sure. I mean, my take has always been that we'll never get there with below-market rate. The the math just never works. If you're getting ten or fifteen or twenty percent of of the, for, uh, the market rate units, you'll never reach the forty-five percent affordability or fifty percent affordable of the RENA. RENA is like, it's forty-five or fifty percent are affordable. So you'll never get there with below-market rates, so you have to. You build a hundred unit, hundred percent affordable. Okay, and you get a hundred units that are affordable. You would have to build three or four or five large market rate, you know, like the Hickory Pitt one. You'd have to build four or five of those to get an equivalent for a hundred unit all affordable rate. So we should be focusing on getting more hundred percent affordable rate developments, okay? Which are going to be mostly apartments. But if we can get two, three or four or five hundred, hundred and fifty unit, one hundred percent affordable, we're we're much better off focusing on whatever we need to do to to focus on a hundred percent affordable. Because if if we're going to reduce the BMR and say, okay, we don't, you only need fifty percent, you only need ten percent. So the difference is, yeah, there's, instead of ten, it's eight or six or whatever the number is, depending on how big the thing is. It, these are small numbers. Though you'll never get there with the BMRs anyway. So we should, uh, we should be focusing on more and more of our attention on trying to figure out a way to get a hundred, hundred percent affordable developments done. And that's, you know, whatever we can do to do that. I I think the, you know, combining, you know, I mean, it sounds like a good idea. It sounds to me, though, that you'd be lucky to find, you know, one guy to do it in the next three or four years, but.
If I can note that, like, this is, I think what you're pointing out is a real problem that, like, the the idea is, okay, we need to produce some thousands of units of subsidized housing that the people living in it will not pay for, so the money has to come somewhere. And it's not coming from the state, from the county, definitely not from the feds. Our plan has been, well, it can come from the other developers. But like, um, the other developers are unable to build anything because it costs too much to do that. So like, this is a tough problem. Um, one of the the phrases that keeps on coming up is, you know, fifty percent of zero is still zero. So like the, at this point in this environment, it may get that the only plausible way we have to produce a significant amount of below-market rate housing is just to produce a tremendous amount of market rate. Produce a tremendous amount of market rate housing with that ten percent that people are gonna provide to get the state, the state density bonus. That may be pretty much what we can do.
Yeah, we, we just have to figure out a way to make it easier to build more housing. And when you have more housing stock, I mean, it's a supply and demand. Question. So you have more supply and the prices are gonna come down. And like, we are, have been very focused on very low, low. Moderate and what we heard is like, it's the very low that is making it super, super challenging. I think that what we heard in terms of the arena number is when we get to, okay, that, that. That midpoint in the cycle, we're gonna have to look at it and we're not gonna have that the number. To meet the lo- the very low, we're not gonna meet the low, we're not gonna meet the, the market rate housing at all. So. I would say at a macro level, we need to figure out how to, how to allow people to develop more units, period. And we're kind of constraining ourselves by, okay, this fifteen percent and this and this, this requirement for very low and. And all of that. So I don't wanna interrupt you, but I'm seconding what you said.
Yeah, so, so I, I, but do we have a me, a medium for below market rate? There's a mi- minimum that the state requires, right, that we can't go below. And that we. What was that?
There is no statewide inclusionary zoning. Developers generally go for ten percent so we can get all the benefits of state density bonus law. Which, uh, a lot of them, among other things, prescribe people wrong to bypass a lot of development standards using waivers and so forth. It's pretty much, if you're doing a large project, you're. Gonna set aside ten percent to get state density bonus because it's really, really beneficial. But they don't generally require that. And just, just to take, take a step back, like the state wants us to take some boxes, right? But in a broader sense, like. The goal we're trying to get is an affordable, livable city. And the reason why it is so incredibly hard to live here is. Because we've done a bad job producing housing. If we try and. Sacrifice getting a lot more housing on the altar of like, maybe if we hit these numbers and so forth, I think we're missing the forest for the trees. And like, I, I absolutely understand, like, it's gonna be really, really challenging to hit arena numbers. The best I can think of that we can do is to get some combination of. Maybe the state comes through with, uh, or the region comes through with an affordable housing bond, some of the, um, projects get unstuck. And we just have a lot of market rate housing with that ten percent in it, maybe. But that, that's the, that's the most optimistic thing I can think of.
I'm sorry, if I can jump in, um, uh, so you just mentioned the word that I think we need to pay attention more to. You said the regional. For transportation, the same thing happened. We cannot just regulate things within city of Campbell. We have to look regionally, you know, huh? So if all these little cities. Combine forces and work with the county and say, let's, let's give all our, um, allocation to the county. And then we all help, or even to the region, maybe nine county Bay Area, you know, would come up with. Uh, enough housing to, to meet and every city contributes their portion. This way it's, they don't have to find.
But that's what Rena is.
I mean, that was major A.
Well, well, Rena is, uh, is allocating each, each cities and each counties.
Within the region.
Within the region, but, but when you look at it and go, you know, my owner can't do it, I may not have the, the, the room to do it. Maybe San Jose says, I'll do it and I'll take the money.
But sales is having a problem with, with meeting their requirements too. It's not like just Campbell. Every, oh, every single city is coming up short. And you know, to answer, um. Davis's question about, you know, almost every city is gonna come up short. I, I can guarantee it. Okay, so the hundred, the five hundred and thirty five municipalities in state. I don't even know if one will meet, I mean, maybe somebody somewhere in the Central Valley. But they're gonna, there's gonna be a massive number of municipalities that aren't even gonna come close to the rate. Okay, based on where we stand now. So the question is, we make our best effort. Okay, and then whatever happens, if they streamline everybody, they're gonna streamline everybody. And we're just, and that means that the developers have even more opportunity to get stuff through, but. You know, it's just not gonna happen. I, 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 my son is the guy who runs the Capitol. Hudden, when I ask him what's gonna happen, he, he stretches shoulders. He's not gonna tell me, okay, but, but. It's obviously in this first two or three years, you can see, I mean, we're, our number, the six hundred and some number is. Basically the same as we had in the previous cycle when there wasn't any of these laws and there weren't any constraints on us. So we're barely gonna beat the last cycle. Unless, and, and if we, if we end up doubling that, if we end up getting to twelve hundred or fifteen hundred, man, that will be incredible.
So I have some comments on what we could focus on.
Yes.
Um.
Uh, actually, uh. You could, you could go afterwards. Okay.
Alright, um, so I think we heard some very important comments from the public that I wanna make sure are captured in terms of our. Items that allow us to be more creative and how we can promote more, uh, development. Um, so I thought the, um. The creativity in when the park impact fees are, um, collected is a very important one. I think that goes to. What I was saying, like, at, at, at the highest level, it goes to what I was saying about phases. You can't collect fees for, you can't have an expense when you don't have any income coming in. So we need to balance that. Model, um, for the developers. Um. I'm not in favor of eliminating the park impact fees entirely, because I think it's important to have a community that, um. That has a place to go, that is, um, a gathering place that is outside, that families and kids, um, can go. And it's gonna be, you know, maintained and clean and it's gonna continue to be, um, updated and all of that. But I also understand that if we, if park impact fees are really what's killing these developments, then I'm willing to. Sacrifice that, um, so that we get some of these developments. However, I didn't hear that park impact fees were the real killer. What I heard was that it's really the, the very low, um, income units that are the challenge. In, um, moving these projects forward. Um. So, you know, one of the other items I think we really need to capture is looking at changing the mix of that very low, low. And moderate, especially because it sounds like the state doesn't have a requirement per se for that. And even if they did. I think we all agree here that we're not gonna meet our numbers regardless, so we do need to take it up a level. Um, and figure out how we build units, rather than trying to be so prescriptive about. These different categories that right now, I think what we're seeing is we're just, we're just too rigid, it's too strict. And things are not moving forward.
Maggie, Maggie, the Rena does have.
Okay.
Percentage.
It has it, okay. Sure, but, but we're not meeting it. I think that's the. And then, um, and then the other thing I wanted to capture based on the feedback was. Um, being more flexible in terms of these larger projects and allowing them truly to be built in phases. Without the rigorous timeline of the next phase needs to be completed within a year. You know, I could see that maybe, and, and my assumption is that, you know, that was, that has been in the code. Um, and that hasn't really, there hasn't been an update to, um, help enable some of these developments that we want to put forward. Um, so those are my comments.
Okay, question, or Cory?
Yeah, um, I agree with a lot of everyone's been saying, um, I guess. I'm, I'm very appreciative of our staff of how, like, that was a really informative presentation. There was really creative things. Um, presented. I, I guess my main concerns are the park fees, park impact fees. We do want. We don't wanna create a city where their people are, we're just in an urban jungle, but we need housing. So we gotta kind of. Throw away our darlings, I guess. I don't kill our darlings to get something done. Um, I'm also, I do have concerns about. Concentrating all of our below market rate housing. You know, to certain areas or just like. Certain buildings or, but again, we, we need housing, so maybe it's not ideal, but. If it's not, you know, in our housing advocacy ideal world, everybody can live anywhere they want. And everyone will have all these opportunities to get a unit in a different, different house where they choose, but that's just obviously. From what our developer said, it's just not the reality. So. You know, we just have to get housing built. Um, I'm really in favor of the J A D U's. Um, I've been living in. Poser County and Nevada County, and there are a lot of houses with J A D U's and, uh. Townhomes with J A D U's that I've been staying in a lot, um. And they're great, you know, smaller starter homes for families. They have opportunities where they can make some income and actually, or, you know, at least. Lessen the difficulty of buying a house in California, even up, up there. Way out in the boonies is really hard. Um. Yeah, um, I like the extended timeline to raise funds. Um. Yeah, those are my main comments.
Oh, I had one more comment that I, that I neglected to communicate. So, um, in terms of the J A D U's, I'm supportive of the J to eighty U's. I'm also in supportive of eighty U's in addition to J A D U's. And I say that because, um, we already have. In our code, basically, the, um, setbacks and height restrictions and lot. Uh, coverage and floor area ratio and all of those things combined limit how much build there can be on a lot. So whether a developer wants to, you know, build the unit or build the unit with an A D U and a J A D U, I think that flexibility. Should be there for how, how they want it. And it's gonna differ. Based on neighborhood, based on city, based on the particular lot and all of that as to what makes the most sense.
And also A D U's count towards Rena, so that's another benefit of, um. Good question.
Probably a good amount of echoing. I'd like that we're focused on supply. Um, we could sit here and talk about what do people want, but I, I think. There's been a bunch of comments about truth, where the financial markets are at and. I think it's good that we're sort of pessimistic about quick recovery and are honest about. What is penciling out and I think kind of focusing on two extremes, either these very small projects that we could build a lot of and fill. Empty lots or homes that we could replace. And then I'm, I'm also very supportive. You know, of these, I think, specific proposals about. Staff coming back and be like, here's the site, change the requirements here, ground for retail. You know, underground utilities, whatever it is for, we, we don't have that many of these big sites, just coming back saying. Hey, we could go curate these four. And that's the difference between right now, zero units. For hundreds, those feel like big bang for the buck. So I think probably in a subsequent report. Those are the two I'm most interested in are like, hey, for the biggest opportunity site, if we could tweak four things. What would unlock them so that they happen? And then for this, I don't know what we call, it's not missing middle. I don't know what we're calling. Like smaller townhomey thing, if that, is that missing middle? Whatever that is, like, what are the broad policy changes? That we think could unlock those, because just doing some supply oriented, what's gonna give us the biggest bang for a buck? I like what Commissioner Zister said of like, hey, we might not hit all these numbers, so let's do best effort, see how many we can get built. Um, and, uh, you know, put some points on the board. So I think those are the two that I'm particularly excited about. Uh, but again, thank you to staff, appreciate developers coming out, staying late, uh, and, uh, good discussions.
By the way, I just wanted to, uh, also vote favor of, uh, that, you know, get, not requiring. Uh, uh, first floor retail, uh, that we have in the past, because I think if that's a, a real deterrent. I can see plenty of places where it, it's not necessary, you know, I, I know we watch like on the corridors. You know, that it would make sense to extend the, the, the retail, but there's plenty of places where just big. Power complex or development can be without the, uh, retail and it would be fine, because there's retail adjacent. And so I, I'm, I'm good with that.
Just two things I wanna throw in. Uh, one, just my second, what Commissioner Zister said about, um, if it turns out that the park speeds are for like capital expenditures. Um, really makes sense to defer or, or change the way we refund those, like. We passed the bond measure to get a new library, we could pass a bond measure to get new parks, if that's what we really need to do. Like, it's not, it's not worth taxing you. And second, um, as I understand, S P nine thirty seven, uh, twenty twenty four delays exaction of fees until certificate of occupancy. For any density bonus or under ten unit project. Um, so we already do, like, the state already requires, requires us to. Delay like charging fees until certificate of occupancy. I think any large project is gonna use density bonus law. I think, I think that covers that.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, uh, I'd love to echo a lot of what my fellow, um. Commissioners colleagues said here, but one of the items, uh, Commissioner Buckwone just brought up is. The timing of payment is a big issue. Um, so maybe we don't have to forgive the, um. Uh, park fee. But we required, you know, at the sale of the unit. So once the developer certainty this unit's gonna sell, you know, they're not gonna be too unhappy about paying the park fees. Cause the money's coming in, you know, and, um, and it's already been penciled there and. So, uh, to me, it's not just the amount of money, it's the timing of the payment. I wholeheartedly agree that retail doesn't have to be underneath all projects. I. Was a planning commissioner for City of San Jose when these things were going through. And the reason they wanted retail, cause San Jose felt they were. The bedroom community of the Silicon Valley and they needed more retail to get more income. That's why they didn't wanna give up. Uh, their, you know, uh, sites to just housing developer, they would require that, but it backfired big time, cause. Many projects would not pencil out. Or, or the retail space sat empty. For years, you know, and okay, that's not what we want. Um, as far as, um. As far as the, uh, in Luffy, absolutely wholeheartedly, I honestly think. If we have a trust fund full of money, then, and then we work with. With the other cities around us, maybe not San Jose, cause that's the eight hundred pound gorilla, but other smaller cities, you know, and collectively. You know, um, uh, we tackle, uh, our affordable units with them. You know, I think that would be much more successful than individually trying to meet it. Um. And, um, as far as, um, A D U's definitely, you know, um, yes on A D U's, yes on J A D U's and. I think that's basically it. I'm, can't think of anything else. Okay, so I hope, I hope you have your, um, recommendations.
We'll take it. Got two pages of notes, we'll simplify that together and just for next steps. Uh, we will take this to council. I was thinking June seventeenth, that might be a little bit too tight, uh, but somewhere in the June, July. Timeframe and we'll encapsulate your notes and recommendations with.
Fantastic. And also thank you to the two developers that showed up. We really appreciate your insight and your recommendations.
Please read plain, plain bagel street line.
That was interesting.
Okay, i- is, is this the, that, that you're talking about?
Yeah, it's at the end of the, it's at the end of the.
Wonderful. Thank you again.
Rob, can I just complain about something? Okay, so I was, I was gonna go back and look up something that was said, you know, with your guys' minute stuff and. You, you guys are like four months behind on posting the videos of the meetings. The last one was posted in January or February on the, on the agenda page. So I, I don't know who, what, why it gets hung up, but I can see it being a month old. Uh, not getting posted for a month, but it, it, you're four months, it's four months behind. And I, I think, and we always talk about like, that's the official, that's the official minutes of the meeting. And yet you can't get to, so.
It is posted on YouTube.
What?
It is posted on YouTube. Are you talking about the minutes?
No, I'm talking about on website. I go to the website agenda.
On YouTube, but it's not linked from the Campbell website to YouTube.
So that's where I would look. I don't know where to look for it on YouTube.
I just youtube.com slash city.
Okay, but, but it, it should be on the website.
Yeah.
I'll take the feedback. I, okay, it's our I T staffing clerk. I'll take the feedback, I, okay, it's our IT staff and clerk, but we'll.
I understand, I understand. I know it's not you guys.
Okay, so, thank you. That was item four. Uh, next, the next one is new business, planning commissioner subcommittee reports. Um, due to the lateness of time, I will take a deferral to the next one of. Um, okay, so, I, I, so one, one subcommittee report, we will defer to the next one. How about, uh, any other subcommittees? Okay, no reports right now, thank you. Uh, and then report of the committee developer director.
Nothing, Josh.
Nothing, okay, thank you so much. So, this brings us to our adjournment. We adjourn to the planning commission meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-five, seven PM, at the City Hall Council's chamber. Thank you.